With the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the October 6, 2020 meeting. Does anybody have any additions, corrections, changes to the minutes? Okay. If there aren't any changes, alterations, et cetera, would someone please make a motion that we accept the minutes?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye, raise your hands. Okay, the minutes from the October 6 meeting are approved. Next item on the agenda are two planning module approvals. That's items three and four on the agenda. They're very straightforward. They're things that we've done multiple times in the past. There's really nothing for us to do except for me to sign them, and I will sign them and send them back. But for the record, they involve a project at 360 Conestoga Road, and also a project at 208 North Aberdeen Avenue. And I'll sign those and send them back to the township. The next item on the agenda, item number five, is Arderson and NLT, North American Land Trust Lot Consolidation Plan and Revised Final Subdivision Plan. John Snyder, would you take us through this, please, on behalf of your clients? Turn on the audio. Audio.
Now I'm back.
There you go.
Do you all have plans in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. This plan was approved a year ago, and it's a plan to consolidate all of the properties that NALT owns. NALT owns, in essence, all but one little piece of what will be the open areas of Arderson. And instead of having it in 25 different little pieces, for example, if you look at NALT Lot 4, you can see there's four NRAs and two open space areas that are in NALT Lot 4. And instead of having six parcels, we want to have one. It really helps with the tax assessor and tax situations. It doesn't change any open space. It doesn't add any new parcels. It simply consolidates pieces that NALT owns. When it was approved before by the Board of Supervisors, if you look at the bottom below NALT Lot 8, there's a property called NRA 24 and a property called NRA 7. They were put in a different configuration on that plan. They're now back to the original configuration, and those have been sold to an investment partnership like the other NRAs were sold to an investment partnership in the past. The only mistake that's on this plan in front of you is that we forgot to include one property that NALT owns that should be consolidated in NALT Lot 2. And we'd like to do that when we submit it to the board. And that is, right below what's called the Manor Lot, is NRA 14. It's above the above NALT Lot 2. That piece is also owned by NALT now, and should have been consolidated into NALT Lot 2. So we would change that property boundary to include that parcel. But other than that, it's simply combining the NALT pieces wherever they can be combined so that there are as few parcels as possible. The only other thing I'll say to you is that in Phase 3, which is to the left of where it says NALT Lot 4 and NALT Lot 1, there's open space in there that will eventually be owned by NALT and consolidated into NALT Lot 1 as well. But that can't occur until we're done with all the improvements in Phase 3 and can then convey it to NALT. And again, above NALT Lot 3, and to the left of NALT Lot 9, there's a property called OS 3A. That again will go to NALT once the Ivy Lane construction, everything is completed so that that can be consolidated into NALT Lot 3. So there will be a few more consolidations to get even fewer parcels. But right now with the countywide reassessment and all of the changes that are going on, the desire to get this into as few parcels as possible and therefore simplify things is the motivation here. But as you can see, all the green area is open area that's owned by NALT, which is a good thing in this development.
So John, is there housing on these NALT lots?
No, these are all totally open parcels. They are either where there were, there were 10 lots that were acquired by NALT in 2017 that make up portions of NALT Lots 1, 2, 6, and 7. And those were all deed restricted a couple of years ago against any development. Other than that, they're open space parcels, and there are NRA parcels that have either been restricted against development or have been put under Act 319. So all of these properties that are green are in some way restricted, either by deed restriction by Act 319, or by being open space under the approvals.
And you anticipate that there's a possibility of further open areas being acquired by NALT?
Oh, yeah. I mean, in Phase 3, you look at Open Space 8A, just to the left of NALT Lots 1 and 4, and you look at Open Space 7, which is a buts the township parcel in the upper left. Those are open space parcels. So the idea in this development was that NALT would own the open space instead of the association. The only piece that will be owned by the association is that little white piece above NALT Lot 8, which is Open Space 6B. And the only reason that that's not going to be owned by NALT is that it has a pond on it.
I think I just answered my own question, but what is the significance of Lot 4-8?
Lot 4-8 is the Brennan's Lot. It's a, it has a house being built on it or already up on it. Because of NALT owning all of the pieces that NALT owns, the road that would have run around the bottom of NALT Lot 1, by Lot 4-4, all the way down to the bottom corner where you see Lot 4-13 with a bank cul-de-sac in front of it.
Yeah.
That road goes away. Doesn't need to be built. There are no houses on it. And the Brennan Lot, in a requirement for frontage, out of this gets a panhandle that comes out to the cul-de-sac that you see just to the left of the word Ayrshire Drive.
Yes.
And that panhandle is, in essence, the old road right-of-way, the 50-foot-wide right-of-way of the extension of that road. And instead of going to Lots 4-7, 4-17, NRA 19, and NRA 25, which are all owned by NALT, that panhandle will instead be deeded to the Brennan's. There was an agreement signed in 2017 to provide for that if this consolidation ever occurred. So the Brennan's will have fronted, that 4-8 will have frontage by that panhandle that comes out to the cul-de-sac of airport, of Ayrshire.
Is there, what's the difference, I guess from a technical standpoint, between NALT, between the various different NALT lots? Is there a different sub-ownership?
No. The only reason why there are these sublots is because each, we made sure that each NALT Lot had road frontage, so it was a qualifying parcel in your, under your ordinances. And there are places where, for example, if you look at NALT Lot 7, little piece there, that's a combination of two NALT lots, but the panhandles of, the two panhandles of Lot 4-21 extends up on both sides of it, so you couldn't consolidate it with anything else. And you couldn't consolidate it with NALT Lot 1 because there's a street there. So we followed all of the ordinance requirements for how you define what a lot is, and ended up having to have 11 parcels. But 11 parcels is a whole lot better than over 30.
Okay. Lastly, in the upper left-hand corner, forgive me, I'm looking at a small screen here. So it's not a NALT, but you said that, what is, I can't see that. Okay, so that's Radnor Township, Radnor Township owns that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
And the only reason Open Space 7 hasn't been deeded to NALT so far is we're still doing the final cleanups on the berm to make sure that it complies with the plans.
But that will actually, eventually, the land that's owned by the township will eventually be put, placed into this trust?
No, no, the township owns that. That's Township Park. OS 7 will be eventually deeded to NALT, as well down at the very bottom of OS 7 is OS 12. That will go to NALT. OS 8A will go to NALT.
Okay.
Okay, and eventually then NALT Lot 1 will include OS 8A, and then there'll be an open, a NALT Lot 12, which will be Open Space 7 and Open Space 12.
Okay, thank you.
So this is something that was in front of you before, approved by the Board of Supervisors, but not signed and recorded because we had these other lots coming on board, and we just wanted to get it done. This way, we could get it done and get Lot 4-8 in the right configuration and not have to come back too many more times with NALT consolidations.
Mr. Snyder, one question. I know we've answered it before. I just want to make sure for the record. So the maintenance of the NALT lots will still be by the HOA, correct?
Yes, all of the NALT lots are either open space, which is maintained by the association, or are what are called Class D lots, or units, in the, in the association. And Class D units are owned by a charity like NALT, but the maintenance and taxes of them are paid by the association. In essence, NALT's an owner, but these are like the open space in the development that's maintained and paid for by all of the residents.
Thank you for confirming that.
What does the applicant need for the Planning Commission to do?
We just need the Planning Commission to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the approval of this revised final plan. It's already been approved as a final plan, but as I said, there are a couple of parcels that are, that have been added, like NRA 14, that have made it more complete at this point in time. And there's the change in NRA 24 and 7 to go back to what they were, instead of the configuration that had been on the prior approved final plan.
So, okay, so while we call, we call this a final plan, it's a final plan until such time as NALT acquires more properties?
Well, when NALT acquires more properties, they'll have to follow, file a consolidation plan that will come in as a preliminary plan. And because once we record it, it's, it's a final plan. It's done. And then when, when we come back for more consolidations, it would, and we'll try and do it just once, it would be a new application of consolidation.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks for that. Excuse me. Steve, do we have any, I'd like to move on to public comment and then come back to the committee, to the members of the commission. Steve, do we have any, any questions from the public?
No, we do not, sir. The only ones that are coming in are for the eastern development right now.
Okay. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any comments, observations, questions, et cetera? I think that this is something that, this, this project that Arderson is something that the Planning Commission has seen many times. And those of us who've been on the Planning Commission for some period of time have seen how this thing has evolved. And I think I'm not out of line by suggesting that it has pretty much developed as advertised, and it's a wonderful development. The National North American Land Trust is able to come in, keep these properties, keep this land open. I would hope that we could get a motion, get a motion made by one of the members of the commission that recommends approval of this final plan.
And when you're doing that, there is a review letter from Gannett Fleming that is basically clean, but suggests that we need to put setback lines on some of these parcels where applicable. And I will have Dave Fiorella get with Roger to determine where that would be, considering the fact that under the lot, the lot density modification sections of the ordinance, there's really a building separation and not setbacks. But we'll, we'll deal with Roger to get those on before it goes to the board.
Okay. So then the motion, if someone would like to make the motion, would be to recommend approval of the final lot consolidation subdivision plan of our Drossen Farm, with the understanding that I've forgotten the term, I'm sorry, lotline and setbacks, et cetera, will be shown on the plan as required by the township engineers.
If applicable.
If applicable. Okay. So. Did somebody write that down, I hope?
I got most, John, I got some of it. The, so I move that we recommend approval of the final plan, which includes a lot consolidation plan, and and that we approve on a basis that the setback lines are added where applicable.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I believe that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And thank you, John, for your presentation.
See you later.
Oh, John?
Yep.
Are you, is Dave Falcone here?
Uh, Dave is gone to be on for tonight, yes. I see his phone number here, yes. He's the one with the 4-842-3205 number. That's Dave.
I'm on, John.
There he is, I see him. Okay, thank you, Dave. All right, thanks, John.
Okay.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is item 6 and 7, which is Eastern University Zoning Map Amendment and Eagle/Radnor Road, Eastern University Preliminary/Final Land Development Plan. So. Dave Falcone?
John, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Is it sound okay? Sound clear?
Fairly, keep your voice up.
Okay, sounds good. So we've got two things on the agenda for you tonight. The first is what I'm going to be speaking of right now, and the second will be the plan to develop the property. Before we got to that, we had submitted to the township a request to rezone the subject properties, which, as you had kind of mentioned in the beginning there, it's a portion of Eastern University. There's actually two parcels which make up just about 20 acres. And they are presently zoned PI primarily, and then one of the parcels is a smaller parcel which is zoned R1 today. As part of the proposed development, this applicant has been meeting for some time, over a year, closer to 18 months, with the neighbors and with the civic association to develop an overall scheme for this property. As part of those meetings, one of the things that was driving the discussion was obviously stormwater, which we'll, we'll get into, but also consistency with the surrounding neighborhood, as well as tree preservation. This applicant went about it, I would say, in the right way, insofar as they, they spent the time to meet with the neighbors and to get feedback. And part of that involved meeting with larger groups of neighbors, even during the COVID situation, as well as smaller groups, individual meetings. Devin Tuohy, who is the applicant's representative, who's going to be with us tonight and offering some, some evidence before the board, met one-on-one with many of the surrounding neighbors there in that community. It's a tight-knit community. They're sensitive to the development that happens around them. And Devin took the time to meet with them to get their feedback. And as part of that discussion, it became clear that the property would obviously need to be rezoned from the PI. That would not allow for the residential-type development that, that this applicant could bring forward. One of the things that was quickly evident to Devin and to his partners was that density on this site was, was very relevant, and that the neighbors wanted to make sure that the property would, if it were rezoned, would be limited in the number of homes that could be placed on the site. And so I think the first thing we should probably address is the agreement that this applicant, Concordia, has made with the neighborhood, and ultimately with the seller of the property, Eastern University, as part of the rezoning that we're, we're looking at tonight, which would be to rezone the entire property to R2, from, from PI and a small piece of R1 to R2. And one of the agreements that we've made is to put on the property a springing deed restriction that would limit and cap the number of homes that could ever be built on this site, whether it's by this development or any other developer that came through. So 50 years down the line, a developer would come in and scrape this site, and then want to come back and put more homes on it. The neighbors were obviously sensitive to that. And like, like all of us, they've seen developers come through with a plan suggesting one thing in order to see something very different be built. This applicant went about it and said, look, we're, we're going to come to you, and we're going to give you exactly what we've promised. In order to make sure that we can do that, we're going to place a restriction on the property, that in the event the property is rezoned from PI to R2, they'll never be able to be built on this home, on this property, more than 20 homes. And the ordinance under R2 might allow slightly higher density than that. So we're, we're limiting the, the density to more of an R1-type concept, which is about an acre a lot, and again, the property is just under 20 acres. So we're placing 20 homes on about 20 acres, and we're limiting it to those 20 homes. A second issue that came up as part of the discussion as this rezoning goes is the, the amount of impervious coverage that would be allowed. R2 would generally permit a higher level of impervious cover in the township. That was concerning to some of the neighbors. This applicant is developing or proposing to develop this site in line with R2 impervious cover requirement, or R1 impervious cover requirements. So that even though the property itself would be zoned R2, the impervious cover that they're putting forth is consistent with an R1 development. Again, that met and exceeded kind of where they were hoping to get with the neighbors. The last piece was aesthetics. The neighbors were obviously mindful of the types of homes that were going to be built. They wanted to make sure that what was coming in would be consistent with their neighborhood. It's a, it's a neighborhood that has, that has a look to it, that's engaging to the neighborhood. And so this applicant spent time bringing forth to this, this group of neighbors, different types of homes, different types of designs. And as part of their meeting with the civic association, as well as individual neighbors, they narrowed down the type of home, the types of materials that would be used. And they've agreed to include in their, in their homeowner's documents restrictions on the types of, of materials that can be used on-site, to make sure that the homes that are built are ultimately consistent with those agreements. And we've also agreed in front of the Board of Commissioners, when we were there to discuss moving this on to your commission, that we would, we would include those things on our land development plan, should a rezoning go through, to make sure that those restrictions and those materials were appropriately recorded in the recorder of deeds, so that for future generations, they would know, could be built here. One of the things to consider in the overall rezoning is the surrounding neighborhood. This property, or these properties, are abutted on pretty much all sides by residential uses. On two sides, you have R2 residential, and on one, you have R1, and then on the other, you have the existing PI. So from a comprehensive planning standpoint, you have a consistent rezone that avoids the idea of a spot zone, where we're taking a piece of property that's located in an area of the township that's zoned one way, and trying to get this small piece to be zoned in an inconsistent fashion. Again, we're lining this property up so that the, the development we're proposing is consistent with the neighbors. That was ultimately the discussion with those neighbors as we went through. As the process continued in discussing it with township staff, we also understood the importance of saving the trees located at the site. So as you'll move through this presentation tonight, you'll see some, some different graphics and different presentation materials that show the existing conditions. I'm happy to share my screen. If, if it suits the Planning Commission, I can show some of the, some of the exhibits that we've put together, if that would be okay.
Well, if we're doing this under normal circumstances, they could be projected. So I think you should probably do that, because I can see from the emails that are coming through, there's, there's going to be, appears to be some significant public comments. I think it would be beneficial if you could do what you can to put these things up on the screen so everybody can see them.
And again, John, so as we, I'm speaking just to the rezoning. As we move forward, you'll see a much more detailed presentation when we get to the preliminary land development plan. So what I'm speaking to is more of a higher level, what allows us to get to that point. Once we get the rezoning, should that happen, then the land development plan kind of follows suit. Without the rezoning, the actual plan itself doesn't work, because the zoning of the property today as PI would preclude that the residential-type development we're moving forward with.
I think everyone's prepared on that.
Yep. Sorry?
I'm still here.
Sure what that was.
How's it going? Oh, you don't have any visuals anymore?
Yeah.
So I'm not a
No, you're ready to go. Keep going. Keep going, please, Dave.
So let me, let me try and share my screen here. It just comes up for you guys?
Yeah. Okay. If you can enlarge it, that's good, that's good. If you can enlarge it, that's good, that's good.
Okay. So this first, this first plan shows the existing conditions on the property. Today, there are 14 homes located on the property, as well as a large parking lot, which serves Eastern University and its students and visitors. So the large parking lot is located, I don't know if you can see, are you able to see the mouse in the arrow?
Yes.
Okay, so this is your existing parking lot. The homes are located towards the outside of the property and are used by Eastern and faculty and so forth. You can see many of the existing trees and the existing conditions that are located towards the outside of the property. Again, this is the PI zone. This is the proposed plan that Concordia is putting forth as part of their development. Again, this would be consistent with the R2 zoning district, but meeting many of the R1 zoning requirements. Part of the proposed development, as I had mentioned earlier, by going with an R2, they were able to save many of the existing trees that were located around the proposed development. The homes were able to be placed in a closer proximity, allowing for the existing trees to be saved. There are 20 lots located in total in the proposed development. The 20th lot is located towards the top of the map. The other 19 are located towards the bottom. This is your existing zoning map. You have the subject site outlined in red. You have parcel B, which is that smaller parcel, located here. That's an R1-zoned property. And then you have the larger piece, which is here, and that would be the PI-zoned property. The plan, again, is to rezone the entire piece to R2. This area here in green, located on the map, is existing R2. Located down here is existing R2. R1 comes off to this side, and then PI up here. So part of our proposed development, and you'll get some more dialogue on this later in the meeting, was to pick up existing roads and continue them through and into the property. By doing so, we were carrying the R2-type zoning into the site, rather than carrying the R1 into the site. This last slide here shows existing conditions on the site, overlaid with the proposed R2 development. You see along the bottom of our proposed development, Radnor Street Road, to the right side of the development, Walnut Avenue, to the left, Eagle Road. The road I was speaking of coming in, Beech Tree, comes from the R2 development, continues right on into the site. That all went into the discussion as part of the proposed rezoning. The process for the rezoning was commenced with the filing of rezoning requests. It was directed then to your commission for consideration. It will be directed to the county commission for their consideration, and then ultimately considered by the Board of Commissioners in a hearing for a map change of this property. That is essentially the map change part of the presentation. It was to lay out for you what's going to happen on the property and why we've gone the direction we have with respect to R2-type development. If you don't want, if you don't have any questions specifically to the map change, we can turn it over to Devin and the development team, which is Mark Stanish, Rob Lambert, Jonathan Alderson, and they can lay out more along the lines of what's being proposed as part of the land development plan. And then if we come back, happy to answer any questions with respect to any aspect of the presentation tonight.
Hey Dave, it's Matt Gollis.
Hey Matt, how are you?
Good. So the history of this property is it was once Valley Forge Military Academy land, right?
That's correct.
And so Eastern acquired it from Valley Forge, and Eastern, based on what I read, intended to create more dorm space, more housing, more student space on this tract.
That's correct. There was plans to develop the property for dormitories. And you may know, Matt, as well, there was some debate in the community as to how they wanted to see the property used and developed. There was actually litigation brought against Eastern University as part of the proposed redevelopment of the property.
Yeah, I saw the two cases. But also, I mean, part of the, Eastern has no intention of developing this according to their original plans.
At this time, no, the intention is for them to sell the property.
So the zoning designation, if you left it the way it was, someone would have to come in and develop the property along the lines of, you know, some kind of commercial situation, right?
That's right. So PI, again, would not allow for this type of, or really any type of residential use. It would be a more intrusive and less consistent use at PI, especially if Eastern were to move on from the property and sell it to some other user.
Yeah, and reviewing the material, this is John Lord. We're going to material, your client, CG Wayne LLC, it's stated that it is the equitable owner of the property in question now. Does that mean that approval of the zoning change is a precondition to completing the sale?
It is.
So just so everybody's clear, and I'm not holding you to anything here, but if the zoning change doesn't take place, your client has an out and does not have to go through with the sale, is that right?
That's correct. So my client would not acquire this property as it's currently zoned.
Yeah, I just want to be clear about that. And the idea here, I know we're getting into the land development piece a little bit, but the idea is to take down the 14 little split-level homes that were built years ago by the Military Academy, and to replace the 14 homes with 20 homes, correct?
That's correct.
And of course, you're going to tear out that parking lot.
That's correct.
Right. I have some other observations. I think one that comes to my mind is that anytime we can take property away from an institution that doesn't pay taxes and return property to our tax base, I think that's a laudable goal. So if you want to move on to the, unless there's some more questions that are directed towards the zoning change, I might also note that, and I want to be clear about this, you have approximately 19 and a half acres here. Of those 19 and a half acres, just about one and a quarter acres or thereabouts, one and a half acres is R1, and the rest of it is PI, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The parcel that ends 7810 is about 18 acres, is that right?
That's correct. John, if you look on the screen, the piece that is PI today has lots 1 through 19.
Go back to the other one.
And then the existing R1 piece is lot 20 at the top of the site.
Yeah, there's a split-level house that sits on that right now, isn't that correct?
There is an existing residence on that house, yes, or on that lot.
There's a stream that runs down there, very small stream.
This is Rob Lambert. There's actually two houses that sit on that lot currently.
Okay, that, and they're split or divided by a stream that flows down between the two of them?
Those two sit on the one side of where the stream or drainage area is, and then all the balance of the site sits on the other side.
You're going to knock down both of those and build one home in its place over there?
Correct.
Okay, alright. So if you want to move on, unless there's some other questions about the zoning piece of this, please, don't let me. Okay, you want to move on to the subdivision portion?
Sure. So I'll just introduce Devin Tuohy, again, who's a principal with Concordia Group, who is the parent of CG Wayne LLC. Devin will give a brief overview, a guess, about his group and his role, and then introduce the team of consultants that he has with him tonight. Again, that'd be Mark Stanish, Rob Lambert, and Jonathan Alderson. So Devin, if you're out there?
Yeah, thanks Dave, appreciate it. Dave, I think, can you stop sharing, because I think Mark Stanish is going to share his screen now with the land development presentation?
Yep, I just did.
Great.
Typical house that's going to be built?
No, not quite. But good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Tuohy. As Dave mentioned, I'm a principal with the Concordia Group. We are the contract purchaser for this parcel and we're the developer of the property. I am joined tonight by some of our consultants who Dave introduced, who will assist me in walking you through this development plan. I just want to note that all of our consultants are locally based, have significant experience in Radnor Township, and have in fact all worked on projects within the North Wayne neighborhood. As Dave mentioned, the property is 19 and a half acres and currently consists of 14 single-family homes, some of which are occupied, some of which have been vacant for a number of years. The houses that are occupied have been occupied by faculty from Eastern or Eastern and Valley Forge Military Academy. The property also has a large surface parking lot, which is used by Eastern University. It's actually an off-campus parking lot that's used mostly during the day by commuting students. The site also has a large tree canopy, and I want to bring that up because it's been prevalent in the design of our site. And that tree canopy runs mostly along Eagle Road. And then down, there's, as mentioned earlier, there's a creek that runs on the eastern side of our property, which is the northern part of your screen. It runs from Eagle down to Walnut. So that tree canopy has a significant number of heritage trees and has been a real focus of our development and how to try to build a project here while maintaining as much of that tree canopy as possible. The site also, I think as Dave mentioned, the site currently has no stormwater management controls. Mark, could you, would you go to the, mind going to the next slide? Great. As Dave mentioned, the development team, we've been working on this property for over 18 months. During this period, we have had over 30 meetings with neighbors, either individually or in larger groups, and have also met with various members of township staff. These meetings have actually been extremely helpful in us crafting our development plan as it was pretty clear from the residents that they wanted to see a project that reflected an extension of the existing North Wayne neighborhood, rather than a project that felt like a separate secluded subdivision. The residents wanted to see a development that was consistent with the density, with the street grid, with the landscape and the architecture of what is currently present in North Wayne. So this aerial that's on your screen, we think it's extremely helpful in talking about the keeping within the fabric of the neighborhood, because it gives a really good idea from a density perspective of what we're trying to do on the site and how it relates to number of houses located within the neighborhood. We think that the density is appropriate for the continuation of the North Wayne neighborhood. Also, with the extension of the street grid, as Dave mentioned, as you can see the cursor, the goal here, or the development plan here, was to extend Beech Tree Lane into the site. And the houses that are situated along Beech Tree within the site are similarly located to the houses along Beech Tree on the other side of Radnor Street Road. In addition, we have two houses that are located on Radnor Street Road or access from Radnor Street Road. Those houses mirror houses across the street on Radnor Street Road. And then along Walnut, as you can see, we have five houses that are accessed via Walnut. Those houses are situated in a similar manner as the houses along Walnut across Radnor Street Road, but also with a little nod to the houses across the street on Walnut. We tried to set each house back a little bit when you're moving down Walnut. As you can see, as we get towards the end of Walnut, we've got a house that's set fairly far back to match the, not in size or scale, but just in house location, the house across Walnut from our property. Also, with this development plan, we thought it was critical to add sidewalks everywhere we could. This is a walkable community, both within the neighborhood and to downtown Wayne. So our plan has sidewalks running up Radnor Street Road, public sidewalks obviously coming into the community via Beech Tree, and then down Radnor Street Road and down Walnut, which unfortunately, the sidewalks end towards the end of our property because we don't control the properties to the east, but goes right down towards Fenimore Pond. The one place on site where we weren't able to maintain the existing street grid, and it was actually a calculated decision, was along Eagle Road. And that was for two main reasons. One, Eagle Road is a very busy road, and we didn't think it, we thought it could be a safety hazard adding three or four curb cuts to Eagle Road, or permanent curb cuts there. And also, if we were to add access points off Eagle Road, the existing tree canopy, which we discussed earlier, would have to be removed. This is just, existing tree canopy has been critical to our development. I'm going to pass the mic real quick to Jonathan Alderson, who's our landscape architect, who is going to give a little bit more detail about the landscape thoughts and designing this property. Jonathan?
For the beginning, we were really cognizant of what a beautiful site this is, especially toward Eagle Road. There's a significant canopy there, and we met with the township arborists to look at the trees along with our own certified arborist. We identified in this area 192 trees that we wanted to preserve, including 41 heritage trees, and they're primarily oak trees. So we used that sort of as a backbone for this development and played off that. Now, obviously, there is some regrading work around the house sites, but a lot of that was taken up in the area of the large parking lot. And that was where the majority of the houses go. And there was some consideration earlier on for actually a additional house site, which the developers discounted in order to preserve more trees. There were proposed 230 trees to be planted on the property. And most of these trees will be native or adaptive plants. We want to use a significant number of oak trees in the replacement to improve the canopy, along with native sub-canopy and flowering trees. So the intent is to sort of give it very much the feel of North Wayne once we're finished. And there's going to be some videos that are shown in a moment that show what this landscape might look like at about year 10. So just keep that in mind. When these trees first go in, they're going to be two- and three-inch caliper trees. They're going to take a while to grow in. But the videos that we're going to be presenting show it at about year 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate it. So although these aerials are really helpful in getting a feel of the overall density and landscape, as Jonathan mentioned, we put together, Mark Stanish, our architect, put together a few videos that provide the perspective from the street and public realm of the development. And so Mark's gonna take over here and show you some videos of running down Radnor Street Road, Walnut, and Beechtree Lane, which we think will really help the commission view what this property will look like. Mark?
Hi, thanks for taking the time. I was thrilled when Devin approached me to design these houses. I've done a lot of work in the Wayne area. We've done some things in North Wayne and South Wayne. And he asked us to design a couple of models that would relate to the scale of the homes in the area and also the style of the homes in the area. We did that. We presented it to some of the neighbors in a Zoom meeting that we had relatively recently, and got some great comments back. We've, in order to complete this 3D model, we've taken one or two of the ones we did and sort of sprinkled them over the site. So if you see the same house a couple of times, that's not the intention of the developer at all. These houses are made to be adapted to different styles as clients come along and buy them. And so I'm going to start the first video here, and it's going to start at the top of Radnor Street Road in Eagle. It's going to come down Radnor Street and turn left on Walnut. And then we're going to have another one that starts in a similar area and goes down Beechtree. So let me start those videos. That's the one house that's, one of the two houses that's actually on Radnor Street Road. Coming down, you can see the stone walls. We're hoping to preserve the stone of the existing walls and rebuild walls that are very much like the walls that are there. This is the extension of Beechtree, looking down that street with the homes. We're gonna, I was tasked with making sure the sides of these houses that you'll see are as nice as the fronts that face the roads. We're coming up to the corner of Walnut. You can see here, we played with a wraparound porch. One of the things that we're encouraging the owners, you know, the future homeowners, that we can do that there. Jonathan did some beautiful landscaping at each of the entrances. You'll see the homes here step a little further back each, as you go down the street here. And the last home is really up on the hill over there. There's two really beautiful, I don't know if they're heritage trees or not, Jonathan, but there's two trees right here that the drive, in the current configuration, goes through that are existing trees that will be preserved.
Can you stop the video there for a moment? If you turn that around, there's a cutout that's down there as you get closer to the stream, but before you go over the small bridge. It's a cutout. It's been there forever. Doesn't go anywhere. Just goes.
Yeah, that's.
Is that your property?
It's not. It's not part of our property. It's part of the adjacent property, and it's a, I think it's a paper street that we believe was vacated a long time ago, but it is not on Eastern's property.
All right, thanks for that. Go ahead.
So this is looking back up Walnut. Again, here we are on Radnor Street Road, coming down the house, going a little faster this time so that we, because you've seen this. And we're turning into Beechtree here, the extension of Beechtree Lane. The contours that are shown here, the topography is very accurate based on the plans, the engineering site plan. We tried to incorporate porches into all the designs. All the garages are side-loading garages. You know, none of them have a front-loaded garage. Now, we're going to turn around and go back up the cul-de-sac. Some of these driveways lead to lots that are up on the hill more. And this is just looking straight down Beechtree. You can see that how it continues after. And again, some heavy landscaping on the corners to screen the houses. And that's just starting again.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Mark, would you mind just pulling up just the development plan once again, the aerial? Yeah, one thing that I wanted to mention that Jonathan and the tree planting, we're saving a significant number of trees. We're also, there's a number of trees along Walnut Avenue that we are going to transplant within the site. There are a few house locations up along Radnor Street Road, existing homes that will be knocked down, and we are going to be transplanting several trees that are currently on site up there to, so that they're going to stay and maintained on the site.
What's the average size of these homes?
These homes are going to be thirty-eight hundred to four thousand square feet.
And what's the setback off the street? And what's the distance between the homes, both on the side and as well as, I guess, the back of the homes, with the backyards?
Mark, that's probably a better question for you. You're muted there, Mark.
I think that's, Rob would have that on his plan. I do have a site plan here that shows the setbacks, so.
On Walnut Avenue, we put the houses about seventy-five feet back from the curb.
Okay.
And that was looking to really kind of carry on the setback that we saw further west on Walnut F. And as was mentioned before, that number gets a little higher as we move to the east along Walnut Avenue.
Jesse, do you know the distances between the house? I know it varies house to house.
Following the R2 zone.
Yeah, so the R2 zoning with a forty-foot front yard, and so all of the lots, you know, will have a minimum of a forty-foot front yard. And then you have a twenty-five-foot side yard. And then on, I believe it's a forty-five-foot aggregate. So it's a twenty-five-foot side yard and then a twenty-foot. So there's like forty-five feet between the houses. And then there's that forty-foot rear yard setback. So depending on all the different configuration around the property is the various setbacks.
Okay, and actually, what about the stormwater management? Because the topography looks like it's, it's, sorry, I'm pointing to my own computer screen. It's obviously from the bottom of the screen going to the top of your screen, it's going down towards the ponds off to the right of your screen. So what are you, how are you doing this? And as well as, I'm kind of looking at the homes that are adjacent to the end of the cul-de-sac. I'm just wondering, you know, those guys are going to be, how are you going to deal with the water that's, will be running off onto their lots?
You ask the perfect question for our presentation. And so going right to the next slide there, Mark. So what many of you know, sitting on the planning commission, is that one benefit of redevelopment is the stormwater management. So right now, we have an existing site with a enormous parking lot and fourteen houses with zero stormwater management on it. It's all just direct runoff. And what this plan shows is the aerial and the proposed plan superimposed with all the blue boxes. And all those blue boxes are actually individual stormwater systems on various lots. We've actually done permeability tests on site and got good results and are able to provide both rate and volume controls for the entire development, looking at the overall site. So for instance, like a twenty-five-year storm from existing conditions is a fifty percent reduction in the amount of runoff, over fifty percent, so.
And actually, my last question, actually, I have a couple of other questions, but with regard to this area, probably more of a question for Steve Norsini. How does it work with the sewer system? Because I always thought with Radnor, there's like a moratorium on, with Delaware County Sewer System.
Capacity is low. Capacity ebbs and flows. So all developers that come in, we urge them to get their planning module on as soon as possible. So for the sake of this exercise, if the zoning, the map amendment was approved and the subdivision of land development was approved by the Board of Commissioners, until such time that they got their approval from DEP to connect the system, the development would not be able to be built.
So one thing to point out is, is we currently have fourteen dwelling units on the property. So we're actually only need six additional dwelling units.
Net six, correct. But that's for any development or any new series of homes that comes into township, not just these, not just this applicant.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question, John. This is Liz Springer. I wanted to ask, what is the condition of the creek? And I noticed it's going to be going through quite a few properties, like many of the creeks around here, with the amount of water that we've been getting and rainstorms have been more intense this past few years and in the past. How is that going to be controlled? Is there a riprap that lines the creek that allows some sort of containment? And, you know, what's going on with that creek? What's the condition of that creek? And how's it going to be maintained to control what it's doing to the neighbors downstream?
Thanks, and Rob, jump in if you want to add anything. But I think that right, as of right now, there, as we said, there's no stormwater controls on the site. And the way the site grades down towards the creek, water right now is basically just sheet flowing from the property into the creek. And so the basins that you see, these blue basins that we are putting in, will capture a lot of the stormwater and in a controlled environment, and then release it into the creek. So I think that the post-development stormwater controls here are going to be significantly better than what's there right now. The condition of the creek, I mean, it's, we haven't done a study of the actual condition of it. I mean, it's, it kind of just runs through there. And our properties, the existing tree canopy that we've tried to maintain runs along the creek. And so we are staying away from the creek with our development as much as possible and trying to maintain the existing trees. So if you see up towards the top of the page, the tree canopy that runs from Eagle to Walnut, that's really where the creek runs. So we're trying to stay away from it as much as possible. I think our stormwater management basins will alleviate some of the water that she flows into the creek.
Yeah, I think I haven't hit it. It's really not the creek that's going downstream causing issues. It's really the runoff in the creek. The creek is just simply a conveyance, you know, it's a means of moving the water. So the creek through this site is really just controlling the water mainly from upstream, right? So from Valley Forge and St. David's Golf Club going up the hill. And then, as Devin said, is putting in all the stormwater systems on this site will help downstream by holding that water back, infiltrating it into the ground and controlling the rates of runoff to lessen the rates downstream that this site would be contributing to.
Does this stream have any, instead of having a riparian buffer or a rock ballast that holds it all back, do you, do they have any areas of this particular section of creek that are held back by stone walls, as it does as it gets into Chamonix?
I would have to walk the whole section. I don't think so, though. I think it's natural.
I've definitely heard a lot of people are having problems with their creek erosion right now. And so I think it's just trying to understand what kind of, what is this creek going through? And do they anticipate having a handful of new neighbors that are going to have to deal with creek erosion and a handful of people downstream that are going to have to deal with it as well?
Understood.
John, can I just ask two more questions?
Sure, ask away.
This is a question for Devin. What other large developments like this have you and or your company have embarked as well as completed?
I'd say several. We, so we're headquartered in Washington DC. I'm in Philadelphia. We opened up an office in Philadelphia four years ago. We've completed three projects in Philadelphia. Each of them a bit larger than this. We did a ninety-one home project in South Philadelphia, which we completed. We're just completing now a sixty-home project in Maniunk, located right on the Schuylkill River called the Lox. Those that commute down Seventy-Six may have seen it. It's just north of the Greenland Bridge. And we had real flood mitigation issues on that site. As you can imagine, Maniunk has a significant flooding problem. And we, so Liz, we're very cognizant of your concerns. We actually had to raise that site eight feet out of the hundred-year floodplain and build significant amount of retaining walls so that the project was above the hundred-year flood zone. And then we've, we're currently completing the largest master plan community in Washington DC right now with over a thousand homes. So, you know, we focus on larger projects and happy to send a more detailed summary of the projects we've completed over the last ten years.
How, and actually, just two more questions, and we'll get on. How do you intend to stage this from a development standpoint? I mean, do you, how many of these lots do you intend to have in, under construction at one point?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So in terms of construction phasing, we anticipate completing all of the site development at one time. So all the grading, the utilities, the roads. And then we typically will build a model home on the project. And we do not like building spec homes. We have a feeling that, given the desirability of this neighborhood, that homes will sell quickly here. But we plan on starting closer to Walnut Avenue and working our way up towards Eagle. One of the, one of the issues that came up during meetings with the residents was construction entrance. And as you can, as you can see, that the ideal location, at least from the resident's perspective, and we agree with, is putting a temporary construction entrance off of Eagle Road so as to avoid large traffic and large trucks moving through the dense residential neighborhoods. So our plan is to have the construction entrance on Eagle, bring in material and trucks along that entrance, and then start down towards Walnut in terms of the construction of the homes and work our way up. Construction on the homes typically depends on how quickly we sell them because we, again, we don't like building spec homes. So we'll build a model unit, and then as a lot is purchased, we will, or a lot has gone under contract, we will start construction at home.
So when you eventually will take down the land from Eastern University, will that all be done in all equity, or would you actually lever that up?
It's all cash. Yeah, we typically buy land all cash, and then we finance construction with the vertical construction and infrastructure with a mostly a construction loan.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Jeff, from the board, from the commission?
I guess I just have one more question, as, and pardon me if I missed this in some of the literature that's given to us. Flaglots, what's the latest on these kinds of driveways that are shared and having houses stacked behind houses? Is that something that we're changing our approach on?
So actually, they're technically not flaglots. So from a frontage standpoint, we actually have our frontage from Eagle Road for all the lots. And so if you look at each lot, they actually would have the required frontage. What we're doing from an access standpoint is actually providing access off of the new road. And it's really the three lots that you're talking about, is seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. But they're actually not interior lots.
Are you building any common open space into this plan?
We, so we are not building a common area per se. We are, the tree canopy area, this will be, just let me take a step back. This will be managed by a homeowners association. And so the homeowners association will manage the common area landscaping. So there's certain locations, particularly the corner of Walnut and Radnor, and then at the entrance. particularly the corner of Walnut and Radnor, and then at the entrance along Beech Tree. Uh, those are critical landscape locations within the community so that those two areas will be managed and maintained by the homeowners association. Uh, same with the tree save area. Um, although a portion legally, as Rob was saying, uh, technically portions of that area will be part of individual lots, uh, that area within the HOA will be managed and maintained by the homeowners association. Um, but the streets, we imagine, I mean, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but we will likely be dedicating the streets back to Radnor if they accept it. And so the streets will be public and the sidewalks will be public. But there's no, uh, open common area within the community.
That's correct.
The restrictions, uh, the the various developmental restrictions in addition to them being in, and and I think also the restrictions regarding the aesthetics of the homes and so on. They would, would that also be incorporated into the homeowners association agreement?
Absolutely.
It would, yes.
And so if the, the Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but the deed restrict, the deed restrictions would be attached to each deed with it of the of each individual home as well as the declaration for the homeowners association.
That's correct. That's correct. So the the entire approximately nineteen and a half, twenty acres will be deed restricted. There'll be an overall deed restriction that would, uh, prohibit kind of more extensive development. And then each lot would take title under and subject to that deed restriction. And then beyond that would be under and subject to a master declaration uh, with which would control, uh, the very things that you're talking about now, which is some some HOA type activity, maintenance activity, as well as, um, the type of architecture and materials that would be used on the homes in the site.
If there's no further questions, uh, we have some public comment that I think we should start with.
One, uh, one comment, John.
I have, uh, well, I've got several emails. I guess some of them are observations. You can call them whatever you want, but I think I'll go through every one of them.
So, uh, John, it's Trish. I just, um, I just sent Steve the entire document. Do you want me to send it to you? It it's every, it's all the comments on one sheet.
I can bring them. I can bring the emails that I got up on my screen.
Mr. Lord, I I think Megan wasn't saying one comment. I think she meant she wanted to make one comment.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I didn't hear it. Megan, did you want to make a comment?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Um, the the only comment that I have is is back to the zoning. Um, I'm wondering, uh, in terms of rezoning both parcel A and parcel B, um, can you explain why we would have to rezone parcel B?
So the the thought around rezoning the entire property to R two would be to be able to put the deed restriction across the entire nineteen and a half acres. Uh, if you heard earlier in the presentation, that existing R one lot has two homes on it now. Uh, our commitment to the neighborhood would be to limit the entire, the entire site to no more than twenty homes. So in order to do that, we wanted to, again, create one large parcel and essentially deed restrict the entire parcel rather than separate it between having split zones property. That that was the ultimate thinking, Megan?
Um, I guess my comment to that would be that, uh, for parcel B, it's in in looking through some of the comments, um, from the township engineer, it's it's hard to tell. The hatching for the slopes and things like that on on the plans that we received. But it, I guess my hesitation would be to recommend that we rezone both. And and it's interesting to hear. I'm not sure if it's a requirement of the, uh, of the development plan that they all have to be in the same residential zone. So it would be interesting just to get the answer to that question. Do they have to be in the same residential zone to be on the same plan?
They don't. What they're saying is that the entire project is going to be rezoned to R two. So there won't be any, uh, split in the in the zoning. I mean, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but the proposed zoning amendment or zoning change would be to take the entire nineteen and a half acres, eighteen of which is is already zoned PI, planned institutional. And about one and a half is zoned R one. And bring it all into the R two classification residential number two. Am I correct about that or did I did I get that incorrect?
No, that's that's correct. And I think I think Megan recognizes that as well. I think the question is, could you pursue this development with leaving the one and a half acres as R one and simply re have a map change for the eighteen and make that R two? And is it possible to have a split zone type development? Megan, is that correct?
It is because, um, the the house that's shown would be non-conforming to R one, I believe. Um, and so I'm just wondering whether that was that was considered on that lot. It it looks like the homes that were built there might be non-conforming as well. Um, and so once those are taken down, obviously you would have to, um, conform to the R one zoning requirement. And so I guess it's it's always our it's always our place to kind of bring up, rezoning is kind of a tough, a tough issue sometimes. Especially in terms of, uh, just only thought.
I lost you a little bit there towards the end, um, of your comment, but, uh, we we recognize certainly that you know, a a map change request is completely discretionary to the township. So we did give thought, I will say, we did give thought early in the process to whether or not, uh, to leave that one and a half acre R one piece, R one, because essentially we could develop that that single lot in line with with R one requirements. As we moved through the overall development, again, we went for a consistent approach across the across the property. And what allowed us to do that and and not really think much more about it was we were really looking to meet most of the R one requirements anyway across the rest of the site. Uh, which would, you know, the the requirements that were sensitive to us, which which were stormwater management, obviously, and impervious coverage. So we're looking to meet the R one stormwater management, the R one impervious coverage, and we're looking for density more in line, well, obviously, a little bit in excess of the R one, but, um, not all the way to R two. So we we could certainly revisit that, Megan, and and see whether that made sense from a development point. Um, but the thought was again, why we went with that all R two was for consistency across the project.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate it. For us, it we we would be okay going R one if that was the wish of the planning commission if, as long as didn't have a drastic effect on the rest of the project. I just, I don't think we've done an analysis recently.
That property that's R one, is there one or two houses presently on that property?
There's two.
Right. And that that area, if you were to follow your current plan. And and also, am I correct that there are two driveways coming off of that property on the Eagle Road across from the military school?
Yeah, that's correct.
There's two, there's two, there's two cutouts and you're gonna, you're gonna terminate one of those, correct? Keep one.
Correct.
Get rid of the other one?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any, uh, any more questions from the, uh, the commission?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add in a little bit on the the split zoning conversation. Um, you know, from an administration standpoint and really just from a general planning perspective, we really want to try to avoid split zones. Um, it makes things a lot more complicated later, uh, for administration as zoning officer. Uh, if a plan were to come in for a patio or a driveway reconfiguration, um, then trying to do calculations on something that is split zone, um, becomes quite complicated. Uh, so you'll preferably you try to get everything in one consistent zoning district. I don't know how the zoning boundary lines would line up with, uh, future proposed lot lines. Um, but ultimately, you know, just good planning practices. You want, uh, one parcel be zoned, um, one district and not split zone.
Right, it's, uh, it this project is a little bit of, with the R one, it's like the tail of the dog, tail wagging the dog a little bit, but I understand Megan's concern. And, uh, I I, your comments are appropriate too, Kevin. So let's, um, if there are any more questions or comments from, uh, the members of the commission. Uh, Trish, I I've got some emails here that we received and I was going to start going through the emails.
That's fine, John. I just, um, I just put them all together to just make it easier. So by each person.
Well, if I miss one, let me, you know, tell me. The first one is, uh, is from Doug Mccone, who is a former member of the, uh, planning commission and I don't know exactly where Doug lives, but I think it's on Beech Tree. But it's very close to the this development. And, um, I won't read it verbatim, but he says that, um, that his first comment is that no sidewalks have been included and they're essential to maintain, uh, the neighborhood, but
John, John, can I interrupt for a second? And Steve, can you re, um, confirm? I believe you have to read them exactly what they write.
Okay, here we go. Yes. Uh, this is from Douglas Mccone. Thanks. I, you're correct, and I should have remembered that. I would like to participate this evening in the discussions about the eastern property at Radnor Street Road and Walnut Avenue. This is the construction of twenty homes. My first comments, comment is that no sidewalks have been included and they are essential to maintain congruency with the rest of the neighborhood. The most important sidewalks are the ones that should be installed along Walnut Avenue from Radnor Street Road to the end of the property near the stream and from Walnut Avenue up to Eagle Road. While these will not connect to any sidewalks on the adjacent properties, they will allow the students and other walkers from the area around Eastern University to more safely walk from the campus up and into the middle of Wayne without having, without walking in the street in one case, and allow people who walk from Valley Forge Military Academy campus to Wayne to walk safely. This is especially important at night when people walking with our clothing cannot easily be seen by drivers of cars. Sidewalks are essential. The second comment is, my second comment is that Radnor does not generally permit flag lots. And the houses seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen all appear to be flag lots. This facilitates more density than would otherwise be permitted. I recognize that the terrain may make other entry routes nearly impossible. But we established a policy for the township for a reason, and we ought to seriously consider the precedent that we are setting by allowing this. Thank you very much. Douglas Mccone, formerly of the Planning Commission. I think the first comment that he made has been answered already. I if I heard things correctly, and maybe it wasn't too observable on the plans uh, that were that you could view at home, but you are planning to have sidewalks. Isn't that correct?
Yes, yeah, there are sidewalks along Walnut Avenue uh, from Radnor Street Road to the end of the property as well as on Radnor Street Road from Walnut to Eagle and then along Beech, both sides of Beech Tree within the property.
I see. Now, would would one of your, uh, folks like to comment regarding or deal with the second comment, which is uh, Mr. Mccone's concern that houses seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen appear to be flag lots?
So John, I actually think Rob, Rob had already addressed that question. Those lots uh, actually have frontage along Eagle Road. So they're not deemed flag lots for purposes of the township's ordinance. They're, they're not taking the flag off Beech Tree. They're actually coming all the way back to Eagle and fronting on Eagle with full compliant frontage on Eagle Road. Okay. Yeah, and and we could actually put the driveways very easily. The houses could have been flipped and put out the Eagle Road, but again, as Devin pointed out, that section of Eagle isn't really a residential section. You're right across from the Valley Forge parade grounds and cars go pretty quickly down that uh, stretch. And so it made a lot more sense to take the driveways into a more residential area than the non-residential area.
And it would have required us to remove a bunch of tree heritage trees, which we wanted to avoid.
I do have a question on that. So we're we're taking the construction entrance in from Eagle, correct?
Yeah, so it's going to be a temporary construction entrance and it's going to be located uh, right now, Steve, I don't know how familiar you are with the property, but there's a set of stairs that runs from uh, from Eagle Road up into the property and it's used by a lot of Valley Forge students who uh, cross-cut through the property. And so where that stair location is, um, we are going to remove the stairs and put a temporary construction entrance there. Uh, and then once construction is complete, that will be removed.
So what, how does that work with, uh, tree removal? Obviously, there's no stairs growing on the, there's no trees growing on the stairs. But I'm assuming your construction entrance will be twenty feet wide and you'll do some grading.
Yeah, so there's, I think there's two or three trees that, uh, that have to be removed, but they, it's actually a fairly wide set of steps that run down there. So, um, we thought it was the most logical place to avoid as many, uh, heritage tree removals as possible. I'll get you, I can get you the number of trees exactly, but I think it's two or three.
Just to add to that, um, this is Damon Drummond. When you take construction entrance to Eagle Road, you're going to need a PNDAP permit. Just, just to let you know that.
Yep, thanks, Damon. We understand.
Hey, um, the next comment is from William Marino.
You missed one.
Mr. Chairman, uh, it starts with Mr. Richard Rank. His was at seven thirteen PM. That's the very first one.
Okay, that didn't come through to me.
Uh, alright, I'll read that for you.
Okay, go ahead.
From Mr. Richard Rank. One, I was not contacted to meet with a developer nor any of my neighbors on Walnut Avenue. I received a letter from the developer saying they had met with neighbors explaining plans. Not true in our case. The two hundred block of Walnut certainly would be affected along with our neighbors on parallel streets. Two, twenty homes on that size lot is excessive. The statement that fourteen are there neglects to explain they are small and would be removed in favor of larger homes. Excuse me. Three, the request for the variance from institutional to residential is not met by the acreage available. Besides which cramming so many houses into this space is most certainly not in keeping with this neighborhood. Further, the design of these homes are neither in keeping with our homes nor for that matter interesting. Four, if houses are to be built, they should be on larger tracks and laid out in keeping with what's here, to wit, a place we can walk through, not around like a gated community. Five, I object to so many pools and the havoc of annual drainage. Thank you for reading and listening. Richard S. Rank, two ten Walnut Avenue. Then the next one is Mr. Marino at seven fifteen PM.
That one I did get. My name is Bill Marino and I reside at two Paul Road, which abuts the eastern property. I am generally supportive of the development and have found the developers to be very transparent. I wish, however, to raise an issue with the change of zoning to R two. I understand that this zoning change, that this zoning change request is submitted together with the land use plan. They call us for twenty new homes, open friends, the plan, in quotes. My concern, however, is whether to is whether the change to R two is conditioned on the plan and whether it would bind any subsequent purchaser. Specifically, I am concerned that if the plan is not binding on any subsequent purchaser, the change to R two would allow any subsequent developer to add many more homes and currently proposed by CG Wayne. If CG Wayne decided for any reason not to move forward with the project. If CG Wayne decided for any reason not to move forward with the project. Without conditioning the zoning change to the plan, I object to the change in zoning. Sincerely, Bill Marino." I believe this question has been answered in prior testimony, but if someone would like to go back over it briefly?
Sure, John, I can address it. I can address it, and it's a good question, and it's, we know that it's one the neighbors are sensitive to. The, the short answer is yes, the property will be deed restricted distinct from this plan against density more than 20 homes. The, the deed restriction will be a spring restriction that will move to the property, again, the entire property, and it will spring upon the map change being effective. So it will not be tied to the plan, it'll be tied to the map change, and it will be limiting on the entire property so that no more than 20 homes could ever be built on this 19 and a half acres irrespective of the developer or the proposal.
Now, the next one that I have, Trish, is from Ken Gerns at 7:20 PM.
That is correct.
Okay. So Mr. Gerns writes as follows, "I am writing in support of the applicant's proposed residential project at Eagle and Radnor Street Roads. I feel that the plan and the design that the applicant has submitted will enhance the North Wayne neighborhood and create a very reasonable development for this site." The, the next person that I have is Barbara Kraus Blankley.
Correct.
7:24. Ms. Blankley, Kraus Blankley writes, "Never received any notice of any meeting until this one, and I live within 100 yards of this property and have been involved in the past." She signs her name, Barbara Kraus Blankley, 211 Walnut Avenue. The next one I have is William Marino at 7:27 PM.
No, I have Richard Rank again at 7:26.
So I can read that one, Mr. Chairman. Richard Rank, "Mr. Falcone speaks of meetings which we were neither notified of nor attended. What neighborhood agreement is he referring to?"
Well, I think.
The agreement that I was speaking to, the agreement, John, that I was speaking to is the springing deed restriction as well as the materials that will be used as part of the construction of the homes should the plan be approved. Those were all things that were discussed specifically with neighbors. And candidly, I was not involved in those meetings. They were, they were between the applicant, Devon, and in many cases, individual neighbors that are immediately abutting the site as well as a couple of larger groups that met to discuss the overall development. But those are in general, the, and I say agreement loosely, obviously, there's, it's a commitment from the applicant to those neighbors as part of this development, that that is what will happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Marino, there is one from a Mr. Kevin Blackney at 7:26 PM, do you have that?
Have.
Okay, I'll step through that.
No, I don't have that one.
From Mr. Kevin Blackney, "It is not true that the applicant met with the neighbors. The township should question that statement. Many neighbors I have talked to have not heard from them. As a former member of the Planning Commission, I know this is a critical issue. Kevin Blackney, 211 Walnut Avenue."
Next one I have after that is William Marino again at 7:27 PM.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so Mr. Marino writes, "With the springing deed restriction, I have no objections." Now, the next comment I have after that is at 7:28 PM from Barbara Kraus Blankley. She writes, "This is a gross misrepresentation of neighbor buy-in, period. Many on the 100 block were not aware of this at all till the notice of this meeting and do not find R1 zoning as necessarily preferable." Not sure what, how to, how to answer that, because we're talking about R2, but. The next one I have at 7:28 is from Michael Kearney. Trish, is that, that's yours?
That is correct.
Michael Kearney. He writes, "I have four comments on the proposed development plan for Eagle and Radnor Road. One, I live on Walnut Avenue within 1,000 feet of the proposed development and have not received any communication from the developer providing information or asking for feedback. I find this ironic as a recent de minimis zoning variance application of mine required me to contact 110 of my closest neighbors, in quotes, to advise them of the zoning hearing. Two, the site plan is unimaginative, using the cookie cutter cul-de-sac model so common to often bad new residential development. It reflects neither the planning model for the immediately adjacent North Wayne Historic District, a grid, nor that of the St. David's Neighborhood, which at least has many public streets with distinct entrances and exits, not dead ends. I would like to know, I would like to know if either of these alternatives was seriously considered, and if so, why were they rejected? If not, I'm sorry, and if so, why were they rejected? If they were not considered, why not? Number three, "I note that the proposed plan includes four or five private driveways, each of which is nearly as long as the cul-de-sac itself. Wouldn't it be better to add an additional public street, public street area to open up the development to the community around it? The cul-de-sac in the current plan simply serves as a shared driveway for nine homes that would, but would be maintained at public expense but adds little public benefit." And number four, "One of the most attractive features of North Wayne is its walkability. While it is commendable that the proposal adds sidewalks, they only serve to direct pedestrian traffic around the development, not through it. Signed, Michael Kearney, 124 Walnut Avenue, Wayne, PA 19087." So if you want to do those one at a time, I guess I can read them back if you didn't, didn't catch them.
No, do you, so I guess, do you want me to respond to?
Well, the first one is, "I live in Walnut," he says he lives on Walnut Avenue, 1,000 feet from the development, but he didn't hear from anybody. And yet, when he had to do something by way of a zoning application, he had to contact 110 of his closest neighbors, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the mechanics of his, I know rezoning is, or a variance could have different legal requirements, and Dave Falcone can speak to that. In terms of the meetings, we have not met with every single person who lives within 3,000 feet or whatever areas of this site. Again, we have met individually with a significant amount of the neighbors. There was a large neighbor meeting that we did not organize, but was organized by Commissioner Larkin, and I did not come up with that list, but there were, I think, 20 to 25 local residents at that meeting where they, they showed the plans and presented them to those local residents. And, yeah, I mean, we've not, I've not met with every single neighbor, and I don't want to, I don't want to implicate that I have, but we have met with an extensive number, and both at large gatherings and individual gatherings.
Second comment is, is observation that the plan, the site plan is unimaginative, uses cookie cutter cul-de-sac model so common to often bad new residential development.
Sorry, yeah, the cul-de-sac was required because we don't, there's nowhere to run Beechtree Lane 2, there's a creek at the bottom of the property, and then adjacent properties, the adjacent property is two separate single-family homes with no street grid, so there was no place to extend Beechtree 2. In terms of unimaginative, I mean, the, as we stated, the, the site plan was in keeping in line with the existing street grid, and again, except but for the, the houses front of Eagle Road, which we made the decision that we didn't think it was the right one to remove a ton of trees to keep houses front of Eagle Road. And I don't, I don't think the plan was to be imaginative, I think the plan was try to keep with the existing, the existing neighborhood context.
One, the, the third question deals with what the, the questioner states, that he notes that the proposed plan includes four or five private driveways, each of which is nearly as long as the cul-de-sac itself. Maybe he's referring to the, the flag, so-called flag lots or the lots that front on Eagle Road, but access the cul-de-sac, the Beechtree extension.
Yeah, then, again, we, you know, we made the decision to pull those lots off of Eagle and to not have extra curb cuts on Eagle, so I guess we could have put a, another curb cut out to Radnor Street Road, but again, now, I think we, we would, we'd be removing a bunch of heritage trees, so we just thought the logical location was Beechtree Lane. No, that's the location for this development.
And any questions to benefit to the community at large when the cul-de-sac really serves this finite group of homes? You know, it's yet to be determined, I suppose, if the township's going to accept the, the cul-de-sac or not.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, but the, the, we are going to be putting the streets and the sidewalks in. And whether the township accepts, the township does not accept it, then those will be privately maintained and managed, and we will still keep the township's standards in terms of widths and required materials.
The questioner, I think, is wondering why there are not sidewalks that pass through this development. While it is, while it is commendable, referring to the sidewalks that are on the plan, while it is commendable that the proposed, proposal adds sidewalks, they only serve to direct pedestrian traffic around the development, not through it.
I guess the question would be, where would they be going to? Would pedestrians, I mean, there's, there's a creek on one side of the site that then accesses private homes on the other side of the creek?
Yes.
I think that the, most of the traffic in and around the area would be walking to their homes or down to Fenimore Park, so then that's where the, we located the sidewalks.
Okay, the, the next questioner, the next email that I have is from Michael Kearney at 7:28 PM. Trish? Is that what you have? Steve?
So that's the one you just read.
I'm sorry, Barb, I'm getting punchy already. Barbara Kraus Black again at 7:30 PM.
Correct.
Ms. Black writes, "He is ignoring all of the institutions that border on three sides. That is what we found attractive when we moved to this neighborhood 20 years ago."
I think there's only one institution that borders the project, which is Valley Forge. The, the property is bordered on the other three sides by residential homes.
The next.
Kevin Blackley at 7:33. John, did we lose you?
Nope.
I'm sorry, it's actually Patricia Conlin.
Patty Conlin at home at 7:33 PM.
Steve, can you send that to me, I didn't get her?
This is one where Trish replied, so the resident's saying, "I sent an email this weekend to be able to participate in tonight's planning meeting. Please send me this link." So I believe Trish reached out to all these folks and noted to them that the Zoom meeting is not open to the public, but it is televised live on YouTube, and from there, they send their comments into this meeting.
Okay, the next one that I have is at 7:34 PM from M. Hunt Treeonon@gmail.com. So it's actually for one we haven't spoken about yet, it's TreeononHOA Public Comments to Planning Commission. So we'll deal with that when we get to the next one.
So you missed.
Mr. Kevin Blackney.
Kevin Blackney at 7:33.
So the, the email from Kevin Blackney states, "Did you ever meet with the NWPA? Kevin Blackney, 211 Walnut Avenue." So that's for the developer? Did you ever meet with the North, North Wayne Protective Association?
Dave, that's the, is that the, the Community Development Organization? Because, yeah, we, we did meet with the local RCO. Was that the Radnor Library?
The North Wayne Protective Association is a group of homeowners that live in the North Wayne area. I don't, I don't know the acronyms you're using, but that's what the resident was asking about.
If that's the organization that Sam Giradelli is the president of, we did meet with him in a public meeting.
I believe we met with them, Devon, at the library. At, at least with their leadership, I think it was a meeting that was open to the, to the association, but there were limited, I think, limited attendees, but I do believe you met with them.
Yeah, I, I apologize, it's, it's, it was, it's been a while, so we, it was last year, we did meet with him, correct?
The next one that I have is from Karen, from Barbara Kraus Blackney at 7:44 PM.
Kevin Blackney at 7:37.
I don't have that one.
I can read that for you, so from Mr. Kevin Blackney, "Why aren't they saving the trees at Walnut and Radnor Street Road?"
We are, a lot of the trees on Walnut and Radnor Street Road are actually being transplanted. There's a, I think Jonathan can speak to that, but there's a significant number of those that are being transplanted to other locations within the site.
Yeah, there's 41 trees actually been transplanted, and the majority of them are on Radnor and Wayne, on Radnor and Warner, and they've been transplanted to the periphery of the property to help screen from the neighbors.
So Mr. Chairman, we have another one from Mr. Blackney. Kevin Blackney, "The size of the lots along Walnut Avenue are not incongruity with the size of the lots across Walnut Avenue."
The, I'm just saying, so I know several of the, the two or three houses along Walnut, as Dave was mentioning earlier, are in, within the R1 zoning district, and some of them are enormous lots, so there might be differential. But again, our goal is to continue the street grid that was on the other side of Radnor Street Road along Walnut.
Steve, the next one that I have is from Barbara Kraus Blackney at 7:44.
We have one more from Mr. Kevin Blackney at 7:42. "The zoning change should not be tied into the number of units. Could the zoning change, could the zoning be changed to 15 units to match the number that are being removed? Kevin Blackney, 211 Walnut."
No. Well, that's not, that's not our development plan, so. And I'd be happy, just, I, I would be more than happy to meet in person with Kevin Blackney. I have spoken with him previously, but if he has a bunch of questions, I'm happy to meet with him whenever in the next few days to give him some further clarification.
The next question from Barbara Kraus Blackney at 7:44 PM is, I should say, comment, not question. "Property taxes versus contributions of a nonprofit institution to a local and larger community, and the open space afforded by the PI zoning needs to be balanced consideration. Increased demand on our local streets, especially current taxpayer on Walnut and Beechtree avenues, and community services of 20 homes needs to be considered carefully."
Um, next, okay, I don't need to respond, I mean, I was just going to say that there... Um, next, okay, I, I don't need to respond. I mean, I was just gonna say that there, um, we did a traffic study and because that existing parking lot is being used by, uh, several Eastern University students, the actual traffic will, uh, be decreased with the new development. And this isn't open space as is, this is private land. So, uh, it is not being used, utilized by the public as is.
Right.
So John, it's Dave Falcone. Uh, if we could just, maybe we could just listen to some of these comments, um, and then offer maybe a response at the end to those that are kind of are, um, that we can give a response to rather than break them up and respond individually. Does that work for you?
Whatever, whatever, whatever you want to do, but I'm, I'm gonna read each one of them. If you feel the need to make a response, uh, make it at that time. If you want to say something at the conclusion, that's fine too.
Hey Dave.
Yeah, we'll try and reserve our response till the end.
I, I just ask you to make sure that you do respond because if these folks were at the meeting at a pub, at a face-to-face meeting, they'd be up at the microphone asking you these questions. So I don't, I don't want any of them to get lost. If you don't have a response, that's fine, but if it's, uh, something you can respond to, I think you probably should consider doing that as we read them because there's, there's quite a few more.
And Dave, there are quite a few questions. They're asking quite a few questions. And, um, I think to the extent that the residents ask questions, this is not the normal way of holding a meeting. I think you, you, you have an obligation to address the questions.
And, and we definitely will. I, I was trying to, to the extent there are multiple comments that hit the same topic, we could offer one response was my thought, Mary. Um, we would certainly respond to all of them. But if you prefer, we, we respond after every question, that's okay too. I was just trying to, uh, to be efficient for the meeting purpose.
Well, and I'm not crying.
This is a, this is a situation that is, you know, unusual, different and new. You have to feel our way along. So for the time being, we're gonna treat these just as if they were, were actually in person and, uh, you're gonna respond to the questions. If you don't have a response, you can just say, "I really don't have a response for that," or, or is that effective? We'll move on.
No problem.
Sounds good.
The next one that I've got is from, uh, Patrick Buckley at 7:49 PM. Is that same with you?
That is correct.
So Mr. Buckley writes, "My wife and I live at 306 Shimonie Road, or Shimonie Road, forgive me, uh, right up the street from the proposed project. We purchased our home in 2011 and have been experiencing increased traffic congestion with noticeable increase in the past three years. There have been multiple incidences with pedestrians and vehicles, including a few situations where my children were forced off the road. Many children and students use the road to get to Fenimore Woods Park, Cabrini and Eastern University. Any proposed project should require the developer to provide a sidewalk the length of, uh, Shimonie Road. We would also like to see increased measures to curb the current speed of travel on Shimonie Road, including speed bumps and the like. Increasing the number of vehicles utilizing Shimonie Road, uh, by adding additional homes will only add to the current hazard if safety measures are not put in place." Peter Buckley, 306 Shimonie Road.
Um, we, unfortunately, we do not own the land in between kind of the, the edge of our property on Walnut and Fenimore. Those are, I think it's two separate homeowners that own that property. So unfortunately, we don't have the ability to extend the sidewalks. Um, in terms of traffic, I, I agree that we, we've seen some cars move up and down Walnut, um, at a quick pace. I tend to think that adding curb cuts will, and houses there will slow people down. That's at least our hope. In terms of speed bumps, again, we don't own Walnut Avenue. So, um, if that's something that the community wishes, uh, to be installed, um, we can, we would, we would support it. But again, we don't own Walnut Avenue.
For, for Mr. Buckley, if he's still listening, uh, if you wish to contact me outside this meeting, I can go through the, the steps that are required to request speed humps and, uh, we could take that from there. Uh, if I can give you any information, esnorissini@radnor.org.
Next, uh, comment that I have is from Barbara Kraus Blackney at 7:51.
That's correct.
"The developer only met with residents who always were on the record for preferring a housing development and zoning change to R1 or R2 as the, as opposed to PI zoning. The agreement struck with two neighbors in order for Valley Forge Military Academy and College to sell to Eastern should be disclosed. It was not in the interest of all neighbors. Open friends, one of those parties has now moved out of the neighborhood. Closed parents."
I, I don't have a response to that. I mean, we met with several neighbors who, uh, who weren't enamored with the plan to start. And so we've worked with them over the past 18 months. Yeah, I'm not sure who Ms. Blackney's referring to.
The, the, the problem I think the Planning Commission must be having is that I didn't, wasn't invited to any meeting, I didn't attend any meeting, is a common theme in these public comments. There's quite a few public comments and nearly every one of them is, is indicating that they were unaware of meetings and weren't invited to them. Given that this is your first presentation in front of the Planning Commission, it seems to me you have a little homework to do with, with the neighboring property owners. Dave?
Yeah, I mean, Mary, so I'll tell you, um, and we're certainly, we're, we're taking, I know all of us are taking notes about the folks that are concerned about the, the meetings and who was met with. But, um, I, I can tell you this applicant's done more than most any applicant I've ever seen come through this township as far as neighborhood outreach. Um, they, they've been working hard and they're gonna continue to work hard and reach out to all these folks that have concerns that.
Got an idea here. Excuse me, Dave, let me just interrupt.
Yeah.
I, I think Mary's got a point, but I also think that we need to go through these comments. And then at the conclusion of the comments, I think we'll all have some recommendations. Am I saying we? I mean, our council and the members of the, uh, of the, of the Planning Commission as to what the next step ought to be. But let's get through these comments. We say, we have to go through them. Like, we just can't dispense with them, obviously. Um, the next, the next, um, the next comment I have is again from Barbara Kraus Black at 8:04 PM.
No, Richard Rank.
That one's huge.
I have that, Mr. Chairman. So from Mr. Richard Rank, "I'm trying to find commonality with existing homes. I don't see it. Going to change the character of our historic neighborhood. Materials appear antithetical." Richard S. Rank.
What is the next, uh, the, is the next one Barbara Kraus Black at 8:04?
Yes.
All right. She writes, "20 very large suburban tract homes will not help stormwater management. The homes there are now tiny and the parking lot is relatively permeable. Uh, right around the corner from here floods regularly. I do not understand why this is on the Planning Commission agenda together with the land development plan and a, with the land development plan and, and he same time, I don't know, it's, and not zoning, since zoning code change is required. The PI was well considered as part of a comprehensive planning project, which I participated 20 years ago."
Just to, uh, I'll answer the stormwater. The, the parking lot is not permeable. Um, again, as we mentioned earlier, uh, there are, there are absolutely no stormwater management controls on the site right now. And the, uh, the development plan includes significant number of basins, which will, uh, will enhance the stormwater management on the property.
Okay. The next one I have had is from Brian Johnson at 8:21.
No, Kevin Blackney at 8:12.
I have that, Mr. Chairman. From Mr. Kevin Blackney, "As a Walnut Avenue resident, as a Walnut Avenue resident, I think there should be less homes along Walnut Avenue. It would be more in scale with the street. This should not be approved for 20 units. Rezoning would work for 15 units to match what is there."
Uh, the next one I have is at 8:21 from Brian Johnson.
No, Kevin Blackney again at 8:14.
I have that, Mr. Chair. From Mr. Kevin Blackney, "From the aerial view, the houses along Walnut Avenue are not set back as far as the house on the, as far as the house on the other side of Walnut Avenue."
What's the next one?
So could somebody speak to that, please? Because I know you noted that the, uh, the setbacks change as you go down. Would the developer like to comment on that?
Correct, yeah. So the, uh, setbacks along Walnut do not, um, are, aren't set back as far as the houses across the street along Walnut. They are set back a little bit further though than the houses along Walnut on the other side of Radnor Street Road. Um, with the exception of the lot that is furthest down Walnut, which is setback, uh, a significant amount. Um, but we did taper back the, the homes off of Walnut a bit.
You're on, Mr. Chairman, with Brian Johnson.
Mr. Johnson writes, "We do, we do have a lot of questions in the neighborhood. There is little open space. The setback on Walnut does not match the other side of the street. And the number of houses seem high going down the street on Walnut. Question, how do we control the fences that will be put up and pools? Question mark. Is there any ordinance? There are no trees behind the first row of houses and of going up a hill, all you will see is fences. And the houses are pretty close together. The houses seem large for the land that is there in the pictures. 4,000 square feet for what looks like half an acre lot. So do we have an idea of the lot size of the houses? Is this commensurate with, uh, to the North Wayne neighborhood? Any storm, any stone barrier on the corners and ornamental grasses makes the place, quote, "special," unquote. Is that what we want? I am talking about the entrance on Beech Tree and on the corner of ours. They envision something special. Doesn't that make them elite? We want, we want them to blend in and be consistent. How do we control the materials of construction and ensure the stone and cedar shingles is mandatory? How do we control and ensure no more than 20 homes? The lot is very sloped. How do we, how do we do, how do we understand the slope? Thank you. Brian K. Johnson, 227 Radnor Street Road, corner of Radnor Street Road and Walnut."
Uh, just to answer a few of those questions, I think we mentioned earlier in terms of the materials and the number of units will, will be within the deed restriction. The landscaping at the corners of Walnut and, uh, Beech Tree, Radnor Street Road, where Jonathan Alderson and his crew have spent a long time thinking about that. And, um, I don't think we were trying to, um, highlight a project that is more special than one is already there, but we simply were just trying to create beautiful landscaping. Uh, in terms of the fencing, um, if, if the, there is fencing within, uh, the community on individual lots, the types of materials used for that fencing will be specified in the HOA documents. And so the HOA will control what materials are used, uh, for fencing on site.
The next comment is again from Barbara.
There's, uh, there's one comment there that there is a question about the lot size in relationship to the other North Wayne lots. Um, I looked up the tax records of a lot of the North Wayne lots and lots seem to vary anywhere between 17,000 feet and, uh, like 21, 22,000 feet. Um, I'm sure there's sort of, there are outliers, uh, but that was the majority of them. Uh, the lots in this development are all greater than 20,000 feet. We go from, uh, you know, just above 20,000, a lot of the lots are actually closer to an acre at 40,000. There's a lot that's, uh, over two acres. So all the lots in this development will exceed the 20,000, where there are some in the kind of North Wayne area, which are smaller than that.
Next, uh, the next comment I ha, I have is from Barbara Kraus Black at 8:22.
Yes.
Again, "I don't understand why a proposed zoning change is not before the zoning commission."
It's not where it goes. Uh, a map change comes before the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. It's not a zoning hearing board issue.
Again, uh, 8:36 PM. I'm, I'm sorry, wait a second. There's somebody in between. At 8:34.
Yes.
Sven Deathlifts.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, he writes, "I am, I am re sending my email in this, in case it was not delivered. As a neighbor, I have the following questions slash comments. I was not contacted by the developer. I wonder who was at the multiple meetings mentioned, mentioned in the meeting. I only got the letter last week concerning this meeting. Is there a guarantee that this is not a Toll Brothers-like development? I.e., is there an obligation to follow certain design proposals? Construction period is said to be four years. What are the plans to limit noise from construction for the neighborhood? This will be a burden over years. Sidewalks. Will there be street lamps as well? Especially people walking to Wayne, the, being Shimonie Road are difficult to see at night. The township should take this project as a starting point to solve the sidewalk problem on Shimonie Road, where children walk on the street to the playground in the absence of a sidewalk. General comment, it would be better to skip the last house on Walnut to keep the open character of, of this part of the street. Best regards, Sven. Sven Deathlifts, E.F.E., Global Marketing and Portfolio, TVA, Otiva Pharmaceuticals, Frazer P.A."
Yeah, I mean, the sidewalks, again, uh, I know we've covered it previously. We are incorporating sidewalks here. Uh, the house towards the end on Walnut, which is set back, actually reflects the house across the street on Walnut. Um, so, uh, again, it wouldn't, that's a, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a pretty big lot, uh, that particular house. So I, I think that it does reflect what is going on down Walnut, uh, across the street.
Next one I have is from Barbara Kraus Blackney at 8:36 PM.
Correct.
A very select group of neighbors. Mr. Guerin was not identified where he lives. Barbara Kraus Blackney at 8:39 PM. Apologies. R1 zoning was a typo. I meant R2 in my previous comment. I also meant 200 block of Walnut, not 100 block, though they will also be affected. And then finally, at 8:45, back to Doug Mccone. "I was never invited to a consultation meeting, which I would have attended. I agree with one of the comments just made that a more appropriate development would be a continuation of the grid layout of North Wayne with a public street that would get, that would continue Beech Tree Lane and then add a street at right angles towards Walnut. This would be much more in keeping with the community than a cul-de-sac. Uh, community and new residents would be best served by doing this. Again, we want to incorporate this land into the local community and such, and such a grid, including the sidewalks." Doug, Doug Mccone, 216 Poplar Avenue. I don't have any other comments at this time.
I, I will agree to that.
So, uh, I will start by saying that, picking up on something that Mary said, you need to get, uh, together with the residents in a much more organized fashion, I believe. And I know what Dave said, that you guys have met with everybody under the sun, but we've got a lot of people here who have the contrary thought, and it's important that you undertake to get the word out and get things organized, even with this pandemic, that you can meet the maximum number of people and hear their, their comments and their, and deal with their concerns as best you can within the confines of, uh, what you're trying to achieve with this project. I also believe, having reviewed Roger Phillips' October 22nd, 2020, uh, write-up of the, uh, of the preliminary land development, that there's simply too many things that need to be addressed and corrected. I'm not gonna read every single one of them, but especially for, for stormwater, uh, management, which of course is extremely important here. There, there's just too much that's not, that's missing. There has to be. There, there's just too much that's not, that's missing, or has to be corrected, has to be clarified.
We acknowledge we have a letter from Roger and one from Damon. We reviewed all those, everything was, really will comply, we didn't see any issues. There's some questions that we have to work through with both Roger and Damon, just kind of detailed questions with 18 stormwater basins, you know, even if we have one comment per basin, there winds up being a lot of comments. But we did not see anything in there that was any, any real issue, and we will comply.
I don't have the rest of the, the commission feels, but I do think that this is certainly not a a preliminary final plan that we can work with.
John, I would agree with you. It was a little mind-numbing reading all the, all of Roger's comments. And I, I would like something cleaner before I decide final on something. Like, I know you can say "will comply," but there's a lot of "will comply" s, and there's a lot of details there, and you know, it just seems a little bit premature for final.
Yes, very much so. And, and please, the members of the, other members of the commission, please, let's have your thoughts on this.
John, John, Dave Falcon, if I could just offer, we were not expecting a recommendation tonight from the planning commission. This was our first meeting in front of you, we wanted to discuss the project, we wanted to introduce it. We know that we've got to go back and fix a lot of these things. So just so we're clear on that, we expect to be back to you at least one more time to discuss this project and get feedback. This was simply an introduction, the first pass, getting you all familiar with the project, so that when we come back, you'll have some familiarity. And hopefully, at that point, our letter will be cleaner, and we'll, we will have met with more residents, and, and we can be further down that path. It was really just to introduce the project. And we welcome, obviously, every, every comment you can give us, we welcome, and we will take it into consideration.
The 90-day review is up on January 4, 2021. I think, I think an extension of that may be necessary.
It's likely that we will need to extend that, and we're prepared to do that, John, for sure. Like I said, we, we understand, this is a, it's a big project, there's a lot happening here, there's a lot of engineering. We understand we have to do that work and continue to work with township staff, continue to work with you and with the neighbors. So we understand, this is, this is a big project, we're not building one house. So we get it.
Still, I think that's, I think that's very heads up. And, and generally speaking, I have to say that I think it's a good concept. But I think you've got to hear from the neighbors. I, I don't live that far away, but maybe a 10-minute walk, even a five-minute walk, maybe. But, you know, the neighbors are much closer. And you gotta, you gotta hear what they, what they think. And there's apparently enough of them out there that haven't been sufficiently consulted. And that'll do, I think, go a long way. My feeling is that this has been very productive and a good start. But I think we should table this matter and see you again.
John, two more, two more public comments have come in.
If we were having a real meeting, would we open it back up to public comments?
Okay.
In an in-person meeting. I think what we can do is, we could.
Mr. Chairman, while, while we're still on the subject, I think, if, if it would please this board, I think we should listen to the last couple of comments.
Okay. I think we have to cut it off at some point, though, because this is unlike, unlike an in-person meeting. You know? All right, let's, the next one that I have is Matthew Marshall at 9:10.
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Marshall writes, "My name is Matthew Marshall, and I live at 228 Walnut Avenue, Wayne. I am a firm, former First Ward Commissioner interim in parentheses, and prior member of the planning commission. I would like to propose that there is an interior and dedicated walking trail at this development. The trail would allow the Valley Forge Military Academy, Eastern University, and Cabrini College students to diverse the plus or minus 20 contiguous acres currently zone planned institutional. These three institutions have a long history of allowing access to their, by their neighbors to their campuses. I would hope that the developer would provide reciprocal access to this development to neighboring residents for both students and community members alike. This has been a long tradition for the campuses. So I would think that Eastern University, a seller of this property, would particularly want freedom of movement for their students and faculty. The development represents a significant densification of our neighborhood. Please consider a walking trail for the neighbors. Thank you for your consideration, Matt Marshall." That's the last one that I have. You have another one?
Yes, I have Richard Rank again.
So I'll read that for you, Mr. Chairman. "The architects," from Mr. Richard Rank, "the architects who developed this area of North Wayne created three models of homes, different sizes but homogeneous in appearance. Their planning and foresight resulted in our wonderful neighborhood. The tenor of the developer seems to be to synthesize instead of differentiate." And that's, that's the last one, sir.
Okay. I think we need a motion to, to table this matter.
Make a motion to table.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Isn't it lame? Yes, okay. All right, that was unanimous, thank you. Dave, thank you, and thank you to all your clients.
Thank you, appreciate your time, everyone.
Well, I will see you soon.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Radnor Township School District preliminary slash final land development plan. Who's here on behalf of the school district?
Hi, I'm Hugh Cadzo, I'm the landscape architect with the project. Also, tonight, we have, who's on the meeting is Bill Dolan from the school district. We also have Steve Barons from Breslin Architects, who's the architect on the project, and James Miller, who's with Fidavia, who's the owner's, owner's rep on the project. So I do have some, some things I'd like to show here first, so I'll, I'll go over some things first, and I have a, it's a brief four-minute video, at least to show the commission. It's been used, it's been used for public presentations and for school board presentations to kind of give you an idea on the project. But would I like to step back first? I've been involved to some degree with this for about two years. The genesis of the project originally was simply to replace the home grandstands at the high school. And when the school started taking a look at it, they realized they had some greater issues. I think anyone and everyone who's, who's gone to the stadium, gone to the site, knows that there's little to no ADA accessibility whatsoever to the fields. Also, currently, the existing home grandstand that's there was built in the 60s is proven to be unsafe a few years back. And actually, an opposing football team player, in order for them to go to the locker room, had access up those, the home grandstands, he actually slipped, fell, and broke his ankle. So it's proven to be a problem over the years with the accessibility of the fields, the lack of ADA spaces in those areas. And also internally in the school, as they sat there taking a look at their programming, there also has been issues with the weight room being of insufficient size for the current student, current student population. No secure accesses, access for the natatorium, which is heavily used by the township residents. Also, some other internal rooms that were being really not used properly. And also such a thing as the gymnasium currently does not have any air conditioning. So instead of just a simple replacement of the great home grandstands, it kind of gelled into a, a much grander, grander project. The name of its, the name of the project itself has been Accessibility and Wellness Project. The school district has looked upon it, because they've seen this as more of trying to get everything up to code, up to, up to snuff, provide proper facilities for the size of the current, the current fields, bleachers and seating that is out there now. And what I'm going to do, if I can share the, share the screen, I am going to play this video, which is, again, this has been shown, this has been shown to the public. Hopefully, you can, you can see it. This is showing would, would be the updated ADA entrance coming in off the Loop Road that's in front of the school. Currently, right now, there's no ADA access at all to the tennis courts. This trail you see here will provide that. Also, there'll be a ramp internally as well to get, you know, any students down. This entry plaza now is actually, the track goes all the way down to here. It's too long, will be removed to allow a plaza to view the tennis courts. This is, that's the new ticket booth, this is the new weight room here, and storage and locker rooms underneath. That would be, that's a representation of the new grandstand. I think here, taking a look at this, I think everyone who's been there, he knows there, there is a walkway up on top of the existing grandstand, and kind of a plaza over here where there's some basketball courts. That actually is going to be enhanced and improved upon. Here you can see the ramps that were, that are being proposed. These are all ADA accessible ramps. This is the fieldhouse that relocates some of the, some of the facilities that are in the school and far from the field, such as training rooms and the existing concession stands down there. There's two separate buildings are going to be consolidated, consolidated into this one. This is Anki Field, which is the soccer field. Currently, in this area here, there's a concrete, concrete structure. We jokingly call it, it looks like the seating at the Roman Colosseum. That will be removed and replaced. All, all the seating on the embankment that you currently have occurring now will be no longer allowed, and everyone is going to have to be sitting within the bleacher area. Kind of gives you an overview. This visitor grandstand is going to, is staying in place. This is along Radnor Chester. It's not shown on this rendering, but a lot of our, a lot of our trees, the trees we are proposing for that, which have to be removed, are going to be planted over here along the ball field, along the embankment. Ornamental fence will be used on top of Anki and along the field area to give a little more nicer look. This area here that we're coming up to is actually going to serve as a drop-off. Now, we're probably going to remove the parking from that based off some of the comments we got. So this is kind of looking how you'd enter in. This is the ticket booth area, the one-ticket booth area on the north side of Prevo. Looking at establishing ornamental grasses and along the embankment here. The reason, too, why we wanted to get these ramps a little bit wider is to allow access for gators, the band, others serve, other, you know, not to restrict them, also to control crowds better. This area here, you see, that's actually a bump out for right now, the pool has inadequate storage. This will help offset that issue. To your right here is the new entrance to the natatorium and the back, which, which some of you is the front of the school. Right now, it's, it's difficult to secure this area. This entrance will, will allow, this new lobby will allow that. Currently, this area now has a lot of the maintenance vehicles, the maintenance building, maintenance shop works out of the back of the high school. What we're proposing here is to basically allow, this is a galley of, of ADA spaces for use to the school and the stadium. The maintenance facility, maintenance vehicles will be on the other side over here where the maintenance offices and storages. That's actually going to be a solid panel fence, not the open one you see here. So that kind of gives you a quick overview, at least what the project is going to look like. The, through the process, I'm going to pull up some other documents here. This is an overview, the architect has put together, kind of give you a 2D view of what is, what is occurring here. As it is, from a stormwater perspective, we have been working with staff reviewing some of the issues with stormwater on the site. Aside from the new grandstand and the building addition here, and the new access, accessibility paths that we have, there'll be, this field, Prevo Field will be reconstructed. We'll be constructing a stormwater facility beneath it. It'd be kind of like the egg crate type, as some of you may have seen over the years. The existing grass areas at either end will be modified over to synthetic turf. And there'll be all-new fencing placed along it. And here, we're widening this accessways along the track. Currently, if you're there on the site, it's probably about three feet wide. Again, this is all about not just ADA accessibility, but accessibility for everyone to the facility. And Anki Field will remain as it currently is. The work we're doing at Anki Field will involve a new grandstand and a ramp accessing that as well. Currently, if you, if you go to the facility during football games, this upper parking will be used. People have a tendency to scurry down the embankment here to cross the street. So what's being proposed there is a stair and a crosswalk to better control the, the pedestrians crossing it for the people using the grandstands. And again, this is a plan view of what the 3D view showed you, the pool storage, the lobby addition, and the primarily ADA parking spaces. So all, all the work is being limited to the, would be the western part of the, of the campus. Concurrently, too, I, I think you're all aware, the the district has been working with the township on the, on the trail project, which, I think, did that go back out to bid? Or?
It's out to bid as we speak.
Okay, so yeah, we've been working with the township on that. So there is also a new trail system, which some of the documents between the township and the school district were agreements for the trail were made in mind for this project to make sure that they can, when the construction comes, if they do happen to coincide, which they probably will, they'll make sure that there's no interference with either project. The, as it goes, I think, with the, with the the, uh, as it goes, I think, uh, with the, with the comments, we have, uh, I, I know this is pretty much as our predecessor in this meeting, it's more of an introduction to the commission tonight. Uh, some of you may have seen this, uh, because it's really been, the district has really been open and trying to reach out to the public with it. Um, so I apologize if some of you have seen that video before, uh, but I wanted to make sure some, you know, that everyone gets an idea, kind of, you feel that kind of best represents what the, uh, give you a good idea on the project. So, uh, Bill and Steve, I said, they're also here. I don't know if there's anything that either Bill or Steve wished to add, uh, for the introduction on the project at all. But, you know, they are here for questions if you need to ask.
Thank you. I might just simply add that the, the idea, the genesis of all this, as you put, started about 2016. So, the, the school district has been trying to make these improvements for both educational health wellness, just general programming at our school. So we're not trying to add any capacity here. We're just simply trying to take care of some things that haven't been really addressed since probably the early nineties, when the last big capital project at the high school happened. And, um, so after committees and a few years of developing this program that, that you described, uh, we brought you on about a year ago and then Steve Behrens and Behrens Architects shortly after at the beginning of 2020. And that's where we've arrived at these plans now. But I think you did a good job of laying out, you know, what our goals are. So thank you.
Steve, you have anything you wish to add at all, or?
Um, no, thanks. I, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I think you, uh, both, uh, summed it up quite well. The, uh, I guess I would just, um, uh, echo a little bit with regard to the comments about accessibility. The goal of the project from a design standpoint is really to integrate the, uh, accessible ADA features and pedestrian safety into the design such that, um, it's, it, the, the ramps are really used by all. It's a, it's a universal design for accessibility and, um, ambulatory folks. And so those nice wide ramps are really inviting to everyone. So there isn't a typical separation between steps and ramps, but it's truly a universal experience for everyone, um, and as, as they experience the site. And, um, we, we've had a lot of input on that from stakeholders. There's been literally dozens of meetings, um, with, uh, with two feasibility studies, community input, um, stakeholders at the, at the school district. So it's exciting to, to get to this point with it.
Yeah. And I think too, uh, I, I, the commission is aware or not, there's, there's a heavy usage of the facility with the different youth organizations in the township. And, uh, uh, part of the design with the drop offs and, and some of the other, the accessibility was kind of with an eye towards helping with those situations that it's the kind of the witching hour between five and six, when the youth, the youth leagues come and have to drop, drop the kids off, uh, with the mindset to that, to trying to get things set up a little bit, a little bit, uh, more functional, uh, than what currently has been going on, um, uh, with, uh, with the, uh, usage of the facility. So.
You give us an, uh, some kind of idea about the time, how old are the facilities? You know, you look at a high school and you don't really know. You, you know, things change the way people use these facilities, but this is pretty old, right? I mean, it's.
Yeah. Well, I have, I actually, I worked with, I worked with a gentleman who graduated Radnor in 67 and those were the bleachers that were there when he was there. Um, there, we, we figure, I think they're early 62 or 63. Um, and I, when it comes to the interior of the building, I defer to the architect and, and Bill on that, but there's some pretty old stuff in there.
Yeah, the, the, the nuts and bolts of, uh, the work in the athletic wing, it, that area of the building is, is largely original from back in the, in the sixties. And in the latest rounds of renovations, um, in the nineties, that area was, was not touched. So that's the reason for having to bring up, um, the infrastructure, add air conditioning, those sorts of things and, and accessibility, uh, replacing locker rooms, uh, for the natatorium and, and things like that, that are really, um, long overdue.
But doubt that this is a very laudable project, or actually a series of projects, multiple projects. But I do note that, uh, I think there's some issues here. I mean, I'm looking at Roger Phillips right up. There's an awful lot of things that, uh, need to be revised and corrected. Certainly, I don't think it's in shape to be considered a preliminary final.
No, we, and again, tonight, we're, I think like our predecessors and I, this more, this is more of an introductory thing. Um, I think there's some, there's some issues here that we do need to go over, uh, review with staff and we haven't had that, haven't had that opportunity as of yet. Uh, we have been in communication, um, actually today we had an opportunity to talk to Roger a little bit about the stormwater to get some ideas there. I think there's some other questions and some things here that.
Parking is a big issue.
Yeah. Uh, and that, uh, currently right now, um, uh, as, as it is, you know, we're not proposing any new or additional staff or students. Uh, it's a non-conforming, uh, right now, uh, based off of, uh, the situation. So that, um, that we do need to, uh, investigate.
Has it to a non-conforming use, correct?
The, the, the parking is not, is a non-conforming, uh, is non-conforming.
Current, currently.
Yeah.
Currently, it's not performing, non-conforming. And I think that, uh, if I read this correctly, you're going to be adding some spaces. You're going to go from 426 to 432 total parking, including four van ADA spaces, 16 standard ADA. So you'd have to go to zoning to get, to get that approved.
Yeah, I, and that's, that's, that's the one thing that, uh, you know, we, one of these, with the comments that, uh, like again, we need to, uh, to iron out with that.
Right. And it appears that, uh, you recognize that stormwater management is a big issue, of course, and it seems like there's a lot of things left to be cleaned up with the stormwater management.
Yeah. And we've actually, and actually what we're doing with this too, and again, we're working, we've been working with staff on this. We're actually designing it for future. Because of the situation where it's going below the synthetic turf field, uh, we're designing it, um, in such a manner to have at least capacity. So in the future, if the, if the district needs to add, I forget the total square footage. I, 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 I don't want to be quoted here because I can't, off the top of my head. So, because you don't want to have to go up, rip up the synthetic turf field to put another bank of, you know, storage structures underneath turf field. So we are building capacity and into that, I think some of the stormwater comments were more, uh, explanatory, uh, which, uh, in our phone call today with Roger, I think we can, you know, those, I think we, just based off of our conversations that we had, I think we can work things out with that.
Yeah, John, if I can add to that, there's nothing there that's a deal breaker on the stormwater side. It's just minor items that, that, uh, we will work out as they finalize their design. I don't have any concerns about it.
Where, where, where are we with this? I mean, we're not being asked to approve anything tonight then, or recommend approval tonight. I think we're, we're, we're going to wait to see this again.
Yeah. Yeah. I think I said, we're going to meet with, meet with staff and, and iron out these comments, get them back in, trying to get this letter cleaned up. And, uh, with the intent of, uh, coming back hopefully next month, uh, with it.
The 90 day review is January, is up on January the 4th, 2021. Uh, would you be prepared to give the, uh, uh, give the township an extension?
We may have to. Yes. Yes. Yeah, we would.
So, so we're saying it would come back in January, not in December. Is that what we're saying?
I don't think it, Roger?
Bill.
I mean, Steve, I'm sorry, Steve. Would it be able to come back that quickly?
Yeah, I, I, I think Roger had noted, a lot of these are cleanup items. So I, I think if, uh, the consultants work hard, we're open, will be available to them, that they should be able to come back in December.
Okay. That'd be fine. Let's take a look at it then. So can I have a motion to, uh, the table this application, uh, at this time? Matt, uh, you're making that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
That looks unanimous. Thank you very much. We'll see you in December.
Okay. Quick, what was one of those comments that wasn't for us? Like, one of the comments you're reading, John, was said it was for another project. It wasn't us.
Uh, yeah, the one that I was referring to was for a project on Eithen Avenue.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Uh.
Just pause here for a second so I can answer your question and I don't have any others. No.
Okay.
You have any? Uh, Steve, Trish?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I do not.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is number nine, 200 South Eithen Avenue preliminary land development plan. Okay. All right. Moving right along. Do we have a representative for?
We do, John.
Uh, Nick, okay. So why don't you tell us about this, uh, rather interesting project?
Sure. I have, uh, myself and Dave Fiorello, should be, there he is, is on to, will be, uh, carrying the bulk of the conversation, here in the evening. Uh, this is a nine lot subdivision. Uh, it's over a little less than seven acres. It's up in the trianon section, trianon section, as I think you're probably familiar with across from Magnus Irvin School on Eithen Avenue. Uh, this was, this is part or a modification of a, uh, density modification, an R2 density modification plan that was back in 1984, when trianon was developed. Uh, at that time, uh, there was, the plan was calling for, or provided for, um, 86, uh, dwelling units. Uh, eventually 64 were approved in the plan, even though the plan provided for 86. It provided all the open space and size requirements for 86. Um, of those 64 that the plan, um, uh, approved, 57 of them have been developed. Uh, the applicant here purchased, uh, what was, if you remember, the old home that was there, the old mansion that burnt down and went, kind of just laid there, lasted there for a number of years. I think, uh, some of the people and even board members who live in that area probably recall that. Uh, this applicant bought the property, um, several months ago and is proposing development, as I mentioned, a cul-de-sac that would come in from, uh, Eithen Avenue. It is a non-nine lot, uh, subdivision. Uh, this plan has been presented to the Trianon Homeowners Association. It was unanimously approved by their executive board as well as being unanimously approved by the homeowners association itself, I believe. I was told 90% of homeowners voted and all of them voted in favor of the plan. I believe what, uh, swayed them in favor of the plan is the fact that this is on a cul-de-sac. It will provide, uh, heavy buffering between the rest of development and this plan. And there would be no, uh, access onto the existing trianon roads. It would just be from this cul-de-sac. Um, I'll ask Dave to chime in. I believe if you can take control of the, uh, plans here, Dave, if you can explain, give the board an overview of the plan itself, please. You're muted. You're muted.
Dave, you're muted.
You're muted, Dave.
Not anymore. We have a set of plans, Steve, that can be put up or?
I can share my screen. I, I have plans, Dave. I can share my screen.
All right, Joe.
Ian, if you would allow Joseph Conwell to share, please?
Okay. Uh, Dave, this is just an introductory, um, you know, aerial to sort of show that, um, uh, it, it, the area outlined in yellow is the trianon development. And then the, the area outlined in red is the seven acres that, uh, that we, we have purchased and are proposing to develop.
Actually, the, the road, the cul-de-sac basically follows that existing driveway that goes from Eithen, uh, up to where that mansion was. And it's actually right in the middle, right there, as you can see. And it's almost equal distance between the two existing roads, uh, that, uh, have ingress and egress off of, uh.
So that, that, that's just, that's for orientation purposes. And then Dave, I, I'm just going to go to the, um, the, the set that, that was submitted to the township.
That's fine, Joe.
To you. Okay. So, um, for, to, to, to the, the people, my name's Joe Conwell. I'm with GPX Realty Partners. We, I am the leader of, of, on our, in our firm of, of, of the project. So, what, what we have, what we're proposing is a set, is a seven unit development. I think that, um, for, for, what's that?
You pulled the plan?
This is, I will, this is.
Okay.
Can you not see my plan?
I, I see the initial plan that you put up. I was looking for the development plans that were submitted to township.
No, no, we only see the overview. Okay. Um, well, I don't know. Hold on a minute. Um, I don't know why, uh, um, I'm trying to share my screen. I, I have the, the plans that we sent to the township up.
That's, that's why we have a backup, Joe. Ian, um, if you could stop the screen sharing and pull up that part of the packet, if you don't mind? Thank you. Just one sec, folks.
Thank you.
There you go, Dave. You want to take it?
Okay. Yeah. So the area in light green, uh, this is a aerial photograph, sort of what, uh, Joe had shown before, uh, sort of toned down. Uh, we highlighted the area, uh, of the seven acres interior and, uh, we're showing a, a new subdivision with a roadway coming in from Eithen Avenue. As Nick said, it follows pretty much the alignment of the existing driveway uh, up to a cul-de-sac, up at the, uh, what I would call the higher elevation of the site up into the area where the, uh, mansion and, uh, some of the old buildings used to be. And then surrounded the, uh, the cul-de-sac and the roadway, we have nine proposed lots. Joe, if you, uh, you can.
Yeah, Ian, can you go?
Somebody can pick to the, to the next sheet. I can go over. Yeah. So this would, this is showing the record plan. This is the alignment, the, the lots, uh, here, average in size, roughly three quarters of an acre to an acre. Again, cul-de-sac coming up. Lots are configured, uh, in accordance with the density modification, uh, provisions of the R2, uh, zoning district, similar to what was done originally with the, uh, uh, with the original trianon subdivision. Maybe the next sheet if we can. Uh, this is a, a portion of the original, taken from the original trianon subdivision, uh, record plan, showing the alignment of all the lots. And you can see where we have highlighted in red and green, the new lots or the, the new area that's being developed. This was actually. This was actually four lots as part of the original subdivision. There was a single lot. And I don't know if my cursor shows up here, but lot number one, lot number fifty-two, lot number fifty-seven, and then the interior lot number fifty-eight. So this is a composition of four of those original lots, the mansion lot being a larger one, and then three other lots that were part of the subdivision surrounding it. You can see the driveway coming in off of Eithen Avenue. Down the bottom, there is a sanitary sewer line that traverses the site. There's sanitary sewer in the neighboring Trianon lane that we're tapping in with some of, with the new homes. Maybe we can go to the next sheet. This is a topographic map showing contours and showing the existing features on the site. We've, we've located all the trees. We've identified all those trees. There were areas of, in the center of the site where the old mansion used to be, there's still remnants of one of the auxiliary buildings, swimming pool area, and then remnants of the formal gardens that had been one time a part of the estate. Next sheet. This is a vicinity plan showing the, the site, showing the topography taken around, showing the locations of the existing dwellings. The circles shown are the locations of fire hydrants. So we've identified all the fire hydrants within the area that, the circles were in, represent a six hundred foot diameter from those fire hydrants. You can see that the area is overlaid within that six hundred foot dimension, but we are proposing another fire hydrant as part of the water service coming in here. But it's part of this plan. I wanted to show you all the existing features of the site. We've identified sanitary sewers that cross the area, storm sewers that are nearby. I think the next sheet, if we can go to, shows the the development of the site. Again, we have a roadway coming in from Eithen Avenue following pretty much the alignment of the existing driveway. We've done that to divvy up the site so that we can get lots on both sides of the, of the roadway. Our roadway is coming in. We have a significant embankment, if you will, coming in through the mid portion of the site. We're coming into the site with a roadway at, at a ten percent grade at the lower end, which flattens out up at the upper end, three percent across the, the grade of the cul-de-sac. Tentative house placement are shown as the brown figures on the site. We're showing stormwater management systems that would be associated with each lot in those purpleish areas, if you will, they're sort of areas serving each individual lot with a common stormwater system down at the lower end of the site along Eithen Avenue that would discharge into the storm, existing storm sewer system in Eithen Avenue. The plans note all the various sizes. We're showing grading through the site. And I think the last sheet is our, or the next sheet is our road profile and our road layout, showing the alignment of the roadway. The grades coming in, we're coming in off of Eithen Avenue at a five percent slope, transitioning up to a ten percent grade in order to come up the embankment. Even doing that, we've got roughly a four, five foot cut area to make those grades work. And then when we get out to the top of the site, the aerial levels out at three percent grade. For the most part, that's a layout of what's being proposed. I think the other sheets are some details and whatever, but it's sort of a broad scope of what's being proposed.
Yeah, John, I can start going over the review letters.
Hey, Nick, real, real quick, before we do that, can, can, I, I just would like John Alderson to comment on the, the planting plan, which is a sheet or two down. John, are you, if he's, John, are you still on the?
Yeah, I'm still here. I'm still here. Thank you for having me.
Okay, I think there's another. There it is. John, will you just quickly comment on, on, on the, on the landscape plan, the tree replacement plan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be quick about it. I know everyone's tired. The, the site itself has a lot of significant trees on it. There's a lot of trees that are in a state of decay. I mean, the land was let go. So there are a lot of large trees that are sort of beyond repair that are gonna have to be removed. We're, we're proposing to preserve one hundred and sixty-six trees, of which sixteen are heritage trees. But there are going to be six heritage trees that are gonna have to be removed to get the, the roadways to work and the grading that Dave was just explaining. And we're proposing two hundred and thirty-four trees. So we've been talking with John Husback about this, the Township Arbrist. We're actually gonna put larger trees in, and they're, they're gonna be the trees that run up the, the cul-de-sac in, in lieu of the required two hundred and sixty-five trees as replacement. We're gonna put two hundred and thirty-four in, but larger kind of caliper size. So they'll have more of a shade, an immediate shade impact than, than the smaller two and a half inch trees. And then there's a, a significant buffer planting of deciduous nevergreen trees, trees that run around the periphery that really has helped sort of secure the, the support of the neighbors. You know, we're taking out a lot of Norway maples and all of the, the trees that we're putting in are native shade and evergreens and sub-conopous flowering trees.
Hey, John, the L.A. that was there?
Yeah.
That, that was, I can't tell what condition it's in right now, but it's probably wasn't great, right?
It was, it was in really bad condition. Both John Husback and Steve Schreiner, an arbrist and local arbrist, has looked at it. And for the main, we, we had to take it out. I mean, they were, the trees were really planted quite close together, and they'd been let go. You know, they hadn't, they hadn't been pruned for a number of years. So there's a lot of dead in, in every single one of them.
Got it.
Hey, David.
Hey, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Nick, you wanna take through some of the?
As I had mentioned, this was, in nineteen eighty-four, there was a density modification R2. Actually, the ordinance has not changed since nineteen eighty-four, when this was approved. We intend to proceed under that same ordinance, under the R2 density modification. We believe that we're entitled to do that. Actually, other applicants in this subdivision have proceeded in that manner. The township did request that we ask for a waiver from the provision of the SALDO, which requires a re-subdivision, and that shall be considered a new subdivision. So that is one of the waivers that we are asking for that addresses some of Roger's content or all of Roger's comments regarding the density modification in here. Now, that waiver's not listed. We'll have to add that waiver. I believe you may have received, the board may have received something about it, perhaps a couple days ago or recently. But that is a waiver we'd be asking for from the re-subdivision definition of the code. Looking at the other waivers, most of the other waivers deal with sidewalks. It's just different provisions of the code deal with sidewalks. One of the provisions or one of the requests wa, was to have install sidewalks along Eithen Avenue. And you notice, we only own a small portion of Eithen Avenue, and it's the side opposite Agnes Irwin. I think, as you know, the side where Agnes Irwin is located actually has sidewalks. But then there are no sidewalks all along Eithen Avenue, all the way up to the Villanova South Campus dormitories. So one of the requests was sidewalks along Eithen, but it's a very small portion that we own. It'd be a sidewalk to nowhere. And we really don't have the ability to put in sidewalks that really aid the public in any manner. There's also requests for sidewalks along the cul-de-sac, and I'll ask Dave to address that one because we do have a grade issue there, an ADA issue. Dave?
As I mentioned earlier, we are rising up the slope to get to the top of the site, and we have a roadway that's graded at a, at a ten percent grade. A ten percent grade is the maximum allowed by the subdivision code. Sidewalks along that roadway within that ten percent grade, we would not be able to, first of all, there's a requirement from the township that sidewalks do not exceed seven percent. ADA requirements are five percent. So it's very difficult and almost impossible, I think, to run a, a continuous sidewalk up along the, the edge of the roadway. The ordinance allows, the township ordinance allows possible use of steps, but then that doesn't become ADA compliant. So we have issues with roadway grades versus sidewalk grades and just not the ability to to tie the two together. So for that reason, and given the fact that there's only nine houses that we're proposing, the sidewalk waiver was requested.
Dave, I, I'd like to ask, so I'd like to address, since we're talking about grades. So we have the there's the alignment of the road that you're requesting a waiver from that's supposed to come in at a ninety degree angle to South Eithen, which you're requesting a waiver from so that it doesn't. There was also a waiver request, I believe, for the grade as you come in off South Eithen Avenue, where it's supposed to be flatter, somewhat of a landing. So could you?
That was we can discuss that, Steve. The, the, the way I read the ordinance, maybe, maybe my interpretation is a little bit different, but that I think the ordinance, or Roger mentioned, there's a requirement for a four percent leveling area down at the end for local roads. As defined by the ordinance, the cul-de-sac street is, is a court, so it doesn't meet the requirement. It, it sort of doesn't fall into that requirements of local streets for that five percent, or four percent, I'm sorry. The ordinance makes reference to other standards, you know, that, that would be applicable in a, in a typical design. Given the fact that we've got a short section of roadway that's only nine homes, we're requesting that leveling area to be five percent instead of four percent. As you know, PennDOT driveway requirements are to have driveways no steeper than five percent for the first twenty feet or so. We we're tying our grades in. I think the requirement is to have a hundred foot leveling area. It depends on where you actually do the measuring. I think when I checked the code to, or the plans today, I measured ninety-seven feet from the edge of the Eithen Avenue cartway to the point where we start making that horizontal or vertical transition. So, you know, we may be able to adjust it to get the hundred feet, but we're requesting the, the five percent leveling area instead of the four percent leveling area. Also, disregard relative to the alignment of the roadway. Again, you know, we're coming in off of the, at a seventy percent instead of ninety percent, and the ordinance does permit an angle of seventy percent. To make it ninety percent and to we would actually be
Dave.
I'm sorry, ninety degrees, thank you.
I think you could completely.
We would actually we would be changing the alignment. We would actually be shortening the length, lengths of the roadway so that that leveling area sort of diminishes in length in order to maintain the grades that we have.
You can lower your grade, correct? And I'm just, I'm asking these questions for the planning commission. So you, you set your cut at the top at five feet, but these grades are attainable, correct?
They would be attainable with a deeper cut through the site.
And what would the consequences, if any, be of that?
I'd have to look at that in a little bit more detail, but coming in at four percent instead of five percent for a hundred feet, it gives us a foot of depth once we get a hundred feet into the site, and then that translates up the, up, up the up the embankment, if you will. We do have a sewer line that crosses there. We're trying to maintain a sufficient depth over that existing sewer line. So maintaining a four percent grade instead of a five percent grade, I think would deepen the cut, would exacerbate the grading required for the roadway, and just probably require some additional tree removal and grading to accomplish that.
So yeah, I'm not concerned about the, the grading because if the developer has to grade more, he has to degrade, has to excavate deeper. That's just part of the project. I would like to know if there is an impact in straightening out the road to meet the requirement of a ninety degree angle to South Eithen, the, the landing at four percent and carrying that up. So if that's something we can talk about later, that'd be good. And my last question is, is for the developer, the development group, the team. In lieu of the sidewalks, would the, and this is not a requirement, this is an ask, would the developer be amenable to donating the funds of the sidewalk to a township transportation or path project? You don't have to answer now. Just throwing that out.
I, I gotta jump in here, if you don't mind. When I think of leveling adjustments, grades, sidewalks, ninety percent intersections, what does that all have in common? Safety. It all has safety in common. So you're asking for a waiver from safety. And I'll be quite honest with you, as a neighbor, that is not the approach that we want. You have an opportunity to adjust that grade. And yes, it might take a little bit more trees, but you're pointing out all the negatives, and I wanna go with the positive. And the positive is safety. We have to address some of the issues that are present in this neighborhood, and this is a huge impact to this neighborhood. If you live in this area, you know how many people walk Eithen Avenue, and all it takes is one mother with her stroller to be hit. For everybody to then understand the importance of safety. We need a path from the college. We need people to be able to safely get to neighborhood to neighborhood because they are there. And it's just a matter of time. I bet anybody that travels this, that's listening to this, is gonna say, yep, I almost hit a runner the other night because they don't know what side of the road to be on because there's no sidewalks. And if you don't have an opportunity to slow your cars down because you don't know where the stop sign is because you can't see it coming around the corner, what are you gonna do when you hit the mother with her stroller? So I think we need to think about safety here and leveling, grades and sidewalks. We've got plenty of people that have been asking for them, and as we've been told, and I've heard many of you say it in, in my many years on this planning commission, that we have an opportunity here to provide for the next job. And if we take away sidewalks, then we're giving the next person the opportunity to do the same, and that's not fair. They, that homeowners association has that entire strip. Why can't there be a sidewalk?
Yeah, I gotta say, Liz, I use that road every day. So, and I'm constantly aware of people, kids from Villanova jogging, people using that road, not aware of the cars. I'm not aware of them. It's scary as heck. I totally agree with you. I think you're right. I think we have, this is one of those roads where we have to go bend over backwards to get it right.
We do. We cannot sacrifice the neighbors for nine houses, and we shouldn't have done it to this date so far. We've already put ourselves in a predicament where some new driver in these neighborhoods is going to hit somebody, and it's gonna be awful. And it could have been prevented, and we have an opportunity here to prevent some of these things. And I know that a sidewalk can impact people. I realize that. I am a neighbor, and I realize it impacts two forty-nine South Eithen. I mean, they, some of these neighbors, their driveways were put in so long ago that they don't have great off-street parking. And we may have to consider how that works, depending on the side of the, of the sidewalk. But, you know, you've got, I think the homeowners association has done a But, you know, you've got, I think the homeowners association has done a beautiful job of maintaining that property over there. And as the years have gone by, I mean, it's only gotten better. It's gorgeous. But, you know, we've now got a whole new frontage to deal with. What's going to happen there? How's that going to be maintained? Is it going to look like the rest of it? They going to want to maintain it to the, to the standard that's already been done so far? You know, how can we help them out and help the neighbors on Ithaca Avenue? So we don't have, you know, any of these lovely neighbors backing into someone walking down the street now with all this new traffic?
As we can look at the gray situations on this. Dave, I think we can, we can look at that a little more closely.
Yeah, Nick, we have the ability of plotting, looking at the alignment, plotting the profiles and seeing what, what the, you know, what the issues could be or may not be.
Liz, I don't know how to address the sidewalk, sidewalk all the way up Ithaca Avenue though. I, you know, that's just, I really don't know how to address that one. You know, if you wanted to connect it all the way up to Villanova.
Yeah, and that's a, it's a question that has been coming up. And we have a neighborhood kind of website everybody can communicate on and neighbors talk about these things. And, you know, as the neighborhood has changed over, many young families coming in on Ithaca Avenue especially, I, I think that it's become, the, the issue's been raised again. And so I, I think it either, it can become a planning commission new business thing potentially, but I don't think that we should put this plan through to approval until we find an avenue to figure out how to make this happen in a way that's beneficial to everyone with least impact on, you know, we don't want a single one person out, but I think we need to do something. And I think we need to think about lighting and safety pulling out of there and what the best way to make this safe for everybody.
We can look, as I said, about the safety of pulling out and the grade for that. But we just have a small portion of, of frontage on Ithaca. So that's, you know, it, it makes sense for the, actually, because you have Agnes Irwin, then you have Villanova, it almost makes sense to be on, I guess that, that would be the eastern side of the road. But you have, you know, probably what, 10 neighbors or something there would have to care for those sidewalks and agree to put it in, so.
I could jump in on that. So we actually did a feasibility study on sidewalks to connect Agnes Irwin to the Villanova South Campus sidewalk. And it seemed like the, on the west side of Treenon, the HOA had concern about liability with the sidewalk. And on the eastern side where our residents live, there was mixed feelings of some for and some against putting sidewalk in along that side of the road. That's just a little history on that.
Isn't the railroad bridge a problem too?
There's actually sidewalk from Lancaster Avenue all the way down to the end of the Villanova campus and it stops there. We have a couple of residents there. And if you were to run, run on the east side, it would cross the street and run past the existing homes of our residents and tie in at Agnes Irwin. An alternate plan was to do a crosswalk from the, where the sidewalk at Villanova stops, take it to the Treenon side, run it down and then cross over again at, to tie into Agnes Irwin.
Hey Steve, it, it's, it's Joe Conwell. I, I'd like to add here that, so we're open to discussing participa- I, I, let me retract. It seems like this is a bigger issue than the 350 feet that we own. And so I, I want to be clear that we are fully open to participating in and contributing to a bigger picture solution. But what we would request is that our, I don't know how long this sidewalk issue has been something that there's been an attempt to, to move forward, but I, I, I would hate to think that our project is going to get coupled to sidewalk solution. You know, like, we, we don't want to, we, we don't want to be, you know, tied to that. We're happy to, 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 to work with the, you know, the neighbors as we have to date. But I just want to throw that out there, that I, I would be really remiss to think that we were going to be now tied to not moving forward until a, a sidewalk plan was.
My question was solely about the internal sidewalks to your proposed development, not what Liz had mentioned. Because I said, we, we ran into difficulties trying to do that project on either side of the street. So
Yeah.
I, I'm not asking about a sidewalk project outside your development. I'm asking solely about the sidewalks, if they can be installed. I think my personal opinion is they should be installed on your street, on your proposed street.
I understand.
In lieu of that, I'm just saying to some project for, you know, somewhat towards the cost of that to make a donation to Radnor Township. I don't know that we can tie that. And honestly, again, we ran into roadblocks on either side. So that's, that's a whole different matter for, in my opinion, and a different discussion.
But, but if I heard Liz write, what she was initially saying was safety at the ingress and egress of this development is foremost. So, you know, the sidewalk issue might be, it is bigger, but it's, it's, it's not just the interior sidewalk, Steve. It's like get all the frontage there, like get it, making sure that there's places for people to stand, places where they're seen by vehicles, stuff like that.
Matt, we're on the same page. I, I'd like to see all the development, all the sidewalk required for that development go in. That would provide safe bus stops for the kids that are going to be living there, for people walking. So when I say interior, I mean the sidewalks associated with the development, which is the frontage of Ithaca Avenue and interior. And some may say that's a sidewalk to nowhere, but it is a start and that's how sidewalk connections get started. And I think at a minimum for that development, it provides some safety for the folks when they're, you know, when school kids, because traditionally Radnor school buses do not enter cul-de-sacs. They usually pick up, down, bottom. I, I don't know where these kids are going to be going to school and what the age of the folks buying the homes are. But I am a proponent of sidewalks. I just think the, the bigger picture project is something outside this land development.
And we agree with the safety issue and that's what we had mentioned, that we, we definitely look into that. The grade and the safety issues for the ingress and egress.
Well, it seems to me, based on what Elizabeth has suggested, that the entry to the cul-de-sac off of Ithaca is going to have to be reworked.
I don't know if it's to be reworked, I think it may have to be regraded to some extent. And I'll ask Dave to chime in here, Dave Fiorella.
Well, I think I, I hear that, you know, that we, we've got some concerns with the leveling area, the approach grade and also the, the alignment. And I thought I heard that we're concerned about the 70 degree angle instead of 90 degrees. And if I understand it correctly, I think you want us to look into providing a 90 degree intersection instead of the 70.
All, all because those are waiver requests. So I, my thought is the planning commission should hear the reason behind the waiver request.
Well, we can certainly look at, I mean, I, I think to, to be clear and to present a good argument point, we, we would have to look at what the alignment is and what it does in terms of grading and if it provides any better site distance. And we've got good site distance coming out of the road. We've got very adequate site distance to the left and to the right, stopping site distance along Ithaca Avenue for vehicles turning in there. So site distance shouldn't be an issue with the alignment that we have here. Again, you know, the difference between a 4% and a 5% leveling area is minimal. We'll look at, we'll look at what the difference is in providing that, what, what, what the resulting changes to the site would be with a different alignment.
Just to chime in here, a, whenever we do new roadways, we always try to have a roadway come in at 90 degrees. That does provide the optimum site distance and also the best alignment for the intersection in terms of safety has already been mentioned. So if you, if there is a reason why we can't do it, that's one thing. But in this case, it does look like this is, they're the possible solution to get to 90 degrees without not a big adverse effect. So it would be preferred to go to 90 degrees if possible.
Well, I, I would add that that road is exactly equidistant from the center, the center point of the proposed road, which is essentially the center point of the existing lane, is exactly equidistant from the center line of the two intersecting feeder roads into Treenon, Grammont Lane and, and Shalou Lane. And so from the standpoint of site distance, stopping distance, equidistant, I, and this is just ration, rationale. I'm not an expert on, on, on traffic safety. And we will dig into this very seriously and come up with a solution. But I, I do want to throw out there that, in, in my opinion, in my rational mind, that is, the location of the intersection is the best location for it. Now, it's a separate issue that you, it, it, you know, we're not able to do, do, to, to, to do, provide a 90 degree intersection in that, and, and remain equidistant. But one of the things that I think should be considered, and, and once again, it really is, is logic, but that's a very gentle curve there. But it's certainly enough to slow people down from, from, and they're coming downgrade. So if you're coming downgrade around a curve like that, you're going to go slower than you, than you are if you're coming straight down a hill. And that, that's, that concerned me a little bit when, when looking at, at, at straightness. So it's not a simple issue, it's an important issue. We recognize that and acknowledge it and we will work on it.
I was going to, should I move on through the comments? I think we probably covered all the
Yeah.
ones that are really relevant. I mean, we are asking for the, the standard 500 foot man-made features. And I think Dave has already included some of the plans that show that. Dave, is that right? From the 500 foot for man-made features?
Yeah, we have the, the aerial photograph shown there. And I also put on that aerial photograph the information that we have available on, on stormwater or storm sewers, sanitary sewers and such.
I think mainly everything else was, I know there was an issue regarding steep slope that was mentioned in number nine of the zoning comments regarding the lot one. And it's our understanding that when the mansion was finally demolished after the fire, that it created steep slopes during the demolition. And so we believe that's where the steep slope may exist on that lot. And there should have been a permit drawn for the demolition of that home, which I believe would give us an exception to the steep slope requirements. Basically man-made, we know Radnor doesn't really have a man-made ordinance, but it does have an ordinance that says if it was created as a result of permits or, or permits that were granted, that it basically is exempt. So we'll have to look into that a little more. That was number nine on the zoning comments in Roger's review letter. The other comments involved, you know, the typical comment regarding additional right-of-way, which we believe we've already granted, actually this development when it was first developed, granted additional right-of-way, particularly along Ithaca Avenue. So I believe there's enough there for sidewalks or whatever else would need to be installed as far as public improvements are concerned.
Nick, can you, can you go back and address comment three under zoning?
Oh, that's the one regarding the density modification that we are asking for. That is being covered by a waiver from the resubdivision. Because our, what we are requesting here is that this is a modification of that 1984 plan. It was pointed out to us that in the SALDA, it mentions that any replanning, replating or new division of land shall be considered a new subdivision. So we're asking for a waiver of that requirement so that we can proceed under the old subdivision requirement. And we, and that old subdivision requirement met all the open space, all the lot area requirements. And that ordinance has not changed.
If, if, if you're going back and, and trying to qualify this under the original 1980 subdivision, then let's take another step back to the sidewalks again. You're providing access then to the entire 50 some lot subdivision because you're recreating that at this point. So now you have access to that entire frontage to be able to put those sidewalks along Ithaca.
Oh, there's an issue there too because the homeowners association, our understanding do not want the installation of those sidewalks because of liability issues.
But you said you provided adequate right-of-way in the original subdivision.
There is adequate right-of-way in the original subdivision for them to be installed if they, or desire to be installed.
Can you just be able to say that if we don't want to put sidewalks in, anybody coming into the township can just say, I don't want liability? So therefore they can get rid of their sidewalks? Is that kind of the approach we're going to start taking?
No, no, we're not doing that.
Liz, just to be clear, this was a separate sidewalk project outside of this land development application where the township looked at putting sidewalk on either side of that street. And that's where the HOA was not in favor of this because of liability. And similarly, on the east side of the street, there were some residents that did not want the sidewalk due to either disturbance of their house or maintenance and/or liability to the sidewalk.
But that was a while ago though, wasn't it?
About a year ago, probably when we went through it, maybe a year and a half. I, I'd have to look. We actually did it twice. We did it once on one side and once on the other.
And we understand the issue regarding the sidewalk along our frontage. And that's something we will discuss internally and get back to you.
Is there a way to do a sidewalk on either side without putting the liability on those that are having it in front of their home? I mean, I know part of the reason people were concerned was because they wanted to be able to have some off-street parking in some areas. So maybe the sidewalk drops down a little bit here and there or something like that. I mean, you may have to work a little case by case, but, you know, if it's, it's about shoveling or liability, is there any way to avoid that in a community?
So the township did not want to take on the li- the, so as a rule, the property owner owns a sidewalk and the township does not have the resources to start maintaining what are essentially private side, sidewalks on private property.
So
you're going towards.
Liz, to, to answer your question, even if something was done temporary in the long run, there's no way to, it's either going to be the township or it's going to be the property owner that has the responsibility for maintenance and then the liability. And there's, there's, there's no way to get around that. It's one or the other. I have a question for, for Nick, the following up on something Roger just said. If your position is that that this is density modification as part of a, like a resubdivision of an old plan, then how about, can you address number two in Roger's letter? Are you planning on providing 15% open space?
It's already there in the plan. As I had mentioned, this plan provided for, or could have been approved for, I believe it was 86 homes. And the open space in the plan is already provided. And there's no, it, it already covers this portion of the plan.
I guess Roger and I would kind of wonder how you can count open space in the plan, how you can consider this a resubdivision of an old plan. But then when it comes to access to the, to the roadways for installation of sidewalks, then, then you're just one little section with nine lots.
Well, we are, but because we're only, we only own this portion of the property.
How could you resubdivide a piece of land that you don't own? How can you resubdivide a p- a piece of land that you don't own?
We, we own this. This is what we're resubdiving.
No, but you're taking credit for the other fifty some lots under the density modification.
Modification of the original plan.
Which you no longer control as equitable owner.
We control this portion. We don't control the other portion of it.
But you're utilizing it in, in this portion. That's where, that's where I'm getting confused. So.
I think, yeah, I think we're both, it just seems a little intellectually dishonest to, to say that it's part of. It's part of the overall subdivision for the purposes of, of, of density modification, but it's not part of the overall subdivision. For anything else, and for, um, and for open space, but not for anything else. I mean, I'm, I'm listening, Nick. I, I, like, I want to hear an explanation that I can just nod to and say, yeah, that's okay, but.
Yep, this was. I think everyone agrees that um a subdivision doesn't become void at any particular time. Um, and this subdivision actually, as I mentioned, provided for um a certain number of lots that was never achieved. And those lots still exist and still exist to be subdivided under this old plan, under this eighty-four plan. And um I think the MPC is pretty clear that you can't just void a plan and, and say it's no longer in existence.
The MPC is clear as to the lines that are drawn. Not necessarily as to drawing new lines. But I think that's something um planning commission members that the staff needs to work out with Nick. Before they return to you. It was your idea that this was a presentation tonight, Nick?
Yeah, I think it's going to be. Obviously, there's a lot of issues have been raised, so um I think we have to consider it as a presentation.
Uh, well, I spent a considerable amount of time going through this entire thing. Uh, uh, this afternoon and, and sometime this morning and looking through it. You, you can't, sooner or later, you stumble up against this issue that has just been raised. And we're not going to be able to resolve this tonight. It may be unsolvable or unresolvable, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna get to that point tonight. There are too many issues.
Yeah, I agree.
Very unusual situation because, yeah, you're right, Nick. It's a subdivision plan, but this was never done. And I think that if you're gonna say, we're just finishing a, uh, we're just finishing out. A plan of subdivision that goes back to nineteen eighty-four. Then you have to figure out what was going to be done with this six point nine acres. I don't know that it would be what you just did here. But beside that, I don't think we're going to get any further tonight with this, with this, and there's not going to be any, any, any resolution. I think you're gonna have to go back to the drawing board and meet with staff, come back and see us again. How is everybody else in the commission? How is everybody else feel? Uh, Liz raises very good issues about safety. I mean, they're there or you can't deny them and.
John, I, I have no issue um with where, where you're going with this and we'll, we'll give the board an additional thirty days at least. Extension on the time required. For this.
I don't know if we can get it in Nick, I mean, next, Steve, in, in, in December, but. Depends on, depends on what you guys work out, I suppose.
Yeah, uh, we're, you know, we're, we're open and available to the applicant to work through any of these issues and come back with uh. Perhaps, you know, they can address some of these review comments and uh whether the waivers request stay or go is up to the applicant.
So I know we probably have some public comment that needs to be addressed, but I do before, before you get to that, I do want to just go through my list if you don't mind. I only have a few items, but I want to make sure they make it on. The list that gets reviewed for the next time, if you don't mind, John. Is that okay?
Please go, please put them out there.
All right. So the first one was a sidewalk and safety issues. We kind of are covering that. The second one, uh, the sec- my second big one was water runoff. Um, I know you've got stormwater in there. I can see how diligent the township is about that, but I do want to make you aware. That Trenan does too. It's got a nice big stormwater pond, and I have video of the last time our big rainstorm, what happened to Trenan's stormwater pond. It overflowed Ithaca Avenue. It came down onto the other side of Ithaca Avenue. It flooded the house to the north of south of two forty-nine South Ithaca, ended up in their basement. It then went into the creek and the volume was too much to get under Agnes Irwin's field, so the entire back properties were flooded. Um, so that stormwater system that they have is obviously not designed for some of the rains that we've had. So we need to make sure that when these stormwater systems are overloaded. That the rainwater doesn't end up at two forty-nine South Ithaca and to the north and south of them. So that's one of my biggest concerns and I can send that video if you need to see it. Uh, I also would like to make sure that there's lighting in consideration. Um, we do have a lot of people night and day. Uh, moving to and from, especially during the daylight savings time period, and I want to make sure that there's some sort of lighting at these intersections so that people know they're there, especially as they're new. Um, I would also like to make sure that there's water pressure. Um, I think it was a concern at the last place during the fire when it was trying to be put out, that they have water pressure issues. And had a hard time getting the water up to the facility or to the home. Um, I also would be interested to know who is maintaining the property that's on front edge of Ithaca Avenue. Uh, right now, as I mentioned before, it's, it's beautifully done. Uh, will, will these neighbors be maintaining it to the same standard or would the homeowner association be taking control of that? As well, lot number nine has several slivers, actually two slivers, one that stretches down to Ithaca and one that goes behind. A current property on North Ithaca, or excuse me, on Trenan. I would like to, for the sake of that neighbor. Understand that that little sliver of property is going to be properly taken care of. And then lastly, does the fifteen percent density that you're saying, uh, open space, does that count existing Trenan property? I'm done for now.
Okay, before we move on to public comment, there's just a couple. Uh, any members of the commission have any further comments themselves, et cetera? So, uh, Trish, I have one that came in while we're looking at the uh Eagle Road, Eagle Walnut. Road uh matter, and it was, it's from uh, came in at seven thirty-four and it's from. Looks like M Hunt Trenan at gmail dot com.
It's Michelle Hunt, president of the Trenan Homeowners Association.
Yes, and the attachment, the attachment says. Stayed in November, stayed in November the first twenty twenty. To the Radnor Planning Commission, Ray, uh, two hundred South Ithaca Avenue, dear members. Over the past several months, uh, over the past five months, the Trenan Homeowners Association, HOA. Council has been negotiating with GPX Realty regarding the proposed subdivision plan at two hundred South Ithaca Avenue. GPX proposes nine single-family homes on this six plus acre. Property, which includes three Trenan lots, subject to Trenan's HOA declaration and bylaws regarding architecture. Architectural design restrictions. While GPX did not want to build, quote, Trenan houses, unquote. They still expressed the desire to be part of our HOA. By creating a separate class of lots for the GPX homes, which would have their own rules. Including having entirely different architecture, having much larger lot sizes, allowing pools and sheds. And having a new common collector for stormwater management. We were able to draft revisions to our governing documents, which both parties agreed to. Based on the information presented to us at the time. Our homeowners voted to amend our declaration and bylaws to support this subdivision plan. Today. We just learned from the township engineer that GPX requested a waiver for modification density plan. In order to build these nine homes. We were not advised of this during our negotiations or before our vote and would like a clarification on the waiver and what it means. We understand this waiver seeks to increase the number of homes allowed on this size parcel. We think this waiver seeks to leverage the inclusion of the new GPX homes into the Trenan HOA. To, to ease their way to getting this waiver approved. Please, can you clarify what the current zoning rules allow for a number of homes on the GPX parcel? Understanding this issue could very well impact our community. Thank you sincerely, Michelle Hunt, president of Trenan Homeowners Association. And Bev Ornic, Trenan Homeowners Council member, lead on mansion development.
So. That is an issue that came up today when we were preparing for this meeting, Nick. Maybe you can help with that. What is the difference in the number of units you could get? With an R two development versus the density modification development?
Um, I believe that. Um, if you look at notes from the old plan, I, I, I think the R two is difficult. Because of the setback requirements. Um, it's not because of the lot width, it's not because of lot area. Actually, these lots are larger than the R two requirements of twenty thousand square feet. It's more that the setback requirements for R two are much more severe than the requirements uh in density modification. Um. As I had mentioned, this plan was initially approved for sixty-four. So in my mind, there's fifty-seven there now that we were permitted and the seven remaining are from this area um to be developed. Um, so I, I think we have a minimum of the least seven here and we're requesting nine.
Just, I, I'm not sure. So when I spoke with Ms. Hunt, we went over the waiver request and the new waiver. I don't know that she. I think, I'm hoping she's watching because I think her question's been answered. It's, it's nine lots that the developers requesting. It's not. The density modification, the whole issue we're talking about, isn't to allow them to put ten, eleven or twelve. They're requesting nine, so Ms. Hunt's watching.
Uh, but, but I, 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 I'd like to um. Cl- clarify one thing, that. The idea of the, of the um. Resubdivision waiver uh was hat, w- w- is new, and I, I don't know what day last week we met. And Nick and I met with John Rice and Steve Nusini, uh, but it was, I believe it was Thursday or Friday.
It was Thursday.
Um, and so that was the first discussion of there, uh, that was the initial discussion of. Whether or not the way to address this uh zoning issue was through a waiver request. So I think that there's some concern that we um were not forthcoming. With, with a waiver request in dealing with. Uh, the Trenan HOA, and that's not the case.
And I, and I.
Yeah.
Joe understands, yes, he is correct. I was at that meeting with a solicitor. So yes, that, that did just come up last week. I just want to verify what Mr. Conwell is saying, so.
Right, so, and so we, we have, we, we had a very good relationship, working relationship with the Trenan HOA and I will. Uh, you know, reach out to them tomorrow and make sure that they understand that that was not the case, that this was some sort of a bait and switch. Um, uh, but uh, the waiver does seem like a, a, a reasonable way to, to handle it. Um, uh, this, the whole zoning issue is, came up relatively recently. Um, you know, we've been working on this with them for months and um on, on the assumption that. We were gonna, we were gonna move, you know, we were, we had, we were entitled to and had the right to move for modifying the existing plan.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Steve too, listening to Michelle's letter. I, maybe she thought that we're asking for more. If you were grand to density modification, it's, we're, we're asking for nine lots, which is the same number that we, that you requested from the HLA.
Certainly a, a, a call or a face-to-face with the HOA representatives is something that you'd want to do.
I agree.
I have another, uh, only have one other comment. It came in at nine forty-three PM from Nan Lansinger. Trish, do you have any others before that?
No, that's it.
Well. Okay, so Ms. Lansinger, who lives at two forty-nine South Ithaca Avenue in Rosemont, PA, writes as follows. I live directly across the street from the planned entrance to the new development proposed by GPX Realty. As a forty-three-year property owner on South Ithaca, I am keenly aware of the traffic and speed problems on South Ithaca. It has only become worse with the housing developments built over the past decades. Due to, to the tremendous increase in pedestrian, jogger and biker traffic, especially during COVID. It concerns me that more, that more than a hundred, that it concerns me that a hundred and two more cars. Are projected to be added to the traffic in a twenty-four hour period as a result of the proposed new homes. The safety of the proposed road is. A great concern, knowing the problems experienced in the past with cars and construction vehicles coming downhill. On the current driveway directly, directly. Uh, directly facing my property. I propose that the commission uh require a safe design with the potential for a relocated road. And I think the road she's referring to, I guess, must be the road coming down cul-de-sac, proposed cul-de-sac, I assume.
Yeah, I think so, yes.
We weren't looking at that. That's, you know, the grading and everything. That's we'll be addressing hopefully next time.
Okay. Well, that's it for public comment, and I guess we are at the point where. I have to ask somebody to. Propose that we table this application. Thank you, Matt. That is proposed that we table this application. Any second? With seconds, it thank you very much. All in favor? Okay, that seems to be unanimous. We've tabled this and I understand that. There will be an endeavor to get this back up on uh, in, in uh December. Is that correct? Okay.
We'd like to do that, yes.
All right.
You know, we'll work with the applicant to that end.
Okay. So we're, we've had public comment. That's number ten. Is there any old business or any new business? If not, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Thanks.